Something's wrong with you guys.[56.01][56.01](laughter)
You're on, bud.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 3rd, 2017, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of March 22nd and April 5th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have 12 public hearings scheduled this evening, so we've got a lot of business before this commission tonight. The first of which is a zoning application for approximately 50.2 acres located along Fortress Boulevard to amend the PUD, Victory Station PUD. Swanson Development is applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening, sir.
Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing tonight, as you mentioned, is an amendment to the Victory Station Plan Development. Victory Station is a large plan development that encompasses both the north and south sides of Franklin Road. The areas that are up for amendment tonight are the areas that are called Parcel B, which is this area here with Luke Court and Mercy Court, and Parcel T, which is the area to the north of that. The PUD was adopted back in 2000, and at that time it specified uses and a plan for the entire, the entire plan development. Parcel B was actually zoned for kind of a limited commercial, limited commercial uses in offices such as health services, daycares, and clinics. And Parcel B has not fully developed, and it's been zoned that way for about 15, 16 years. Of the 11 parcels, or of the 11 lots that are in Parcel B, only four of those lots are built out, and they contain two office buildings, a daycare, and a dance studio. So Swanson Development is requesting an amendment to Parcel B with regards to expanding the number of uses that are allowed in Parcel B to allow uses that are more consistent with what we would expect in like the commercial fringe zoning district. And so the, the plan book that you have before you identifies a number of additional uses that would be permitted in Parcel B, which would open it up to more retail-oriented uses, more food services, things that you would generally expect to see in a commercial fringe area. Parcel T, the amendments are a little bit more extensive. Parcel T was not a part of the original plan development. It was added via a PUD amendment in 2007, and it consisted of a 176 dwelling units on 38.4 acres, a density of 4.6 dwelling units per acre. A good portion of the property is taken up by Puckett Creek and its floodway, so that affects the, the density just a little bit. But it included single-family detached, single-family attached, and townhouses with masonry exteriors and vinyl only allowed in the eaves, soffits, and dormers. Despite its approval, Parcel T never moved forward. What this plan proposes to do is completely scrap what was approved in 2007 for Parcel T. And in a moment, Mr. Mulchan with SDC representing Swanson Development will go through a PowerPoint presentation with the new plan. It does involve an increase in density to 185 dwelling units, so that's an increase of nine dwelling units. And instead of the variety of, of housing types, it would consist of townhouses that would be for sale via a horizontal property regime, so essentially condominiums as, as we would know them. The, the plan is consistent with regards to the materials, and Mr. Mulchan, I believe, has some additional information at the work session that we had several weeks ago. There was some discussion about the, the exterior face, the, what appears to be the side on the, on the site plan as it faces the public right-of-way, but it's actually kind of a side front, if you will. It's actually has, houses the front door and faces the public right-of-way, and I think they have some additional illustrations that, that illustrate how those buildings will present to the public right-of-way. But without getting into too much duplication of what Mr. Mulchan will go over, I'll yield the floor to him so that he can give his presentation and the, on the details of what is proposed in Parcel T. And if you have any questions before or after his presentation, I'll be happy to answer them, and of course, he's here as well.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of Planning Commission, Rob Altman, SDC. I'm here tonight on behalf of Swanson Development to bring you proposed amendments to Parcel B and Parcel T at Victory Station, and to introduce you to Villas at Stones Retreat, the portion of, it is Parcel T on that side. As Matthew talked about, the original Victory Station was partly, was originally developed back in 2000. Subsequent amendments such as Parcel T added to the overall master plan, but over time, each of the parcels have taken on amendments as time has gone on, and different types of uses have come along, and opportunities for development have moved along that side as well. As you can see here on the map, this is the most current master plan for the development. You can see Parcel T is outlined, or Parcel Bs and Ts are outlined in blue. And you can see the overall, overall plan itself regarding commercial stuff along Highway 96, and also the residential developments like Parcel G in the north, northern portion is of a good diverse mixture of uses that are part of overall Victory Station. As you can see here, some existing conditions in regards to the existing, the Parcel B, this map isn't updated in regards to, there are two more lots that have now been taken down, one of which is just over here with the dance studio just southwards is Parcel B, and directly underneath Parcel B is an office use going in right now at this point in time. And Parcel T, for the most part, is undeveloped. It is a pretty much wooded or grassed area. You can see to the eastern edge over by, on the eastern side is Puckett Creek and its floodway, and also the trees and vegetation along the streamway itself there. The Parcel T and Parcel B are pretty much encompassed by the PUD that's part of the Victory Station, and then to the south is Pascal Estates, which is a zoned RM in the county. And then you've got a couple of the residential zones, the PRD next door, and then you also have some resident, some RS-12 and RS-10s to the east on the other side of Fortress Boulevard as well. This was the existing plan from 2007, the currently approved plan. As you can see, as Matthew talked about, this is a mixture of townhomes, single-family detached lots, and also duplexes. This did have 176 units, which is nine less than what we're asking for with the amendment for this plan itself. Brings us to the current, currently proposed plan for Parcel T. As I said, 185 dwelling units, which gets us about a 4.81 dwelling units per acre density. As you can see, as you progress in the plan, at the front of the plan along Fortress Boulevard, we incorporated a large green space with the first row of townhomes facing onto Fortress Boulevard, giving it a good street presence in regards to, versus facing some units on the side like the previous plan had done. Here you can see incorporation of the main thoroughfare, the main drive-in, and this is more or less the part, what we call Road A, is a public roadway that comes back to the back, an intersection tees in, actually tees in with Road, with Public Road B going north and south of the property. These are the only two public roads within the whole development. The remainder of the development will be private alleyways, which is what each of the townhomes will have access to vehically, to rear, rear-loaded alley garages. Strewn throughout the project are numerous open spaces that are actually where the townhomes actually front on these open spaces, which will have sidewalks along, along the front of each of the units. This will have a great pedestrian linkage in regards to residents, guests, and visitors that can wander and have a good exercise pathway around the system. The main portion of the overall amenity program is the community center, which is located pretty much in the center of the project. Here we'll have a pavilion, some outdoor deck area, a fire pit or fireplace associated, more or less a gathering space for the community, the residents, and their guests on that side. Community gardens as well. We've also got community gardens here located off to the side, a tot lot for kids for playground, and then numerous areas of outdoor, large open space, outdoor areas for just general recreation, throwing the ball, playing football, kind of stuff. And then at the eastern end of this, you also have the Puckett Creek area, and so we have a very large open space amenity back there for, you know, just wandering, you know, wandering along the creek, playing in the creek as kids do, along with, there's also a dog park here located in the north. We've also incorporated a space for a compactor. We're proposing cart service in regards to this, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about that as we're going to do storage for carts on the non-trash days. Townhomes, 185, they'll all be two stories, minimum of 1,700 square feet of living space. They'll all have at least a minimum of two bedrooms per unit. They'll be alley loaded with two-car garages. Each lot will provide at least four parking spaces. That will include the garage spaces and the driveway spaces. The garage spaces will be dedicated through the HOA, through this document itself, there's word, there's language in the document from the city's standpoint of enforcement for making certain the garages are used for vehicles only and not for storage, and also be in the restricted covenants of the, of the HOA documentation. As Matthew talked about, these were sold under a horizontal property regime or a condo Materials, we're talking on the front side, fully brick-stoner, some type of masonry product in regards to these. This is one of the elevations here. This is more of a traditional look. There's a next slide, you'll see a more Dutch-style look in regards to the architectural elevations. Sides and rear elevations on the townhomes will be included, will be cement fiber or hardy board type material, and then vinyl will only be printed in the trim and soffit areas on the townhomes. Here's a rendering of what the garages will look like from the alleyways. The garages will be, all four sides will be cement fiber board siding. Garage doors will be carriage style and in nature. As you can see in the bottom right-hand side, the example of the side garages, the elevation, this will be the elevation that you see from the public streets when these, when you have a garage along the side, along the public roadway. Couple lot diagrams, kind of give you a little definition, and this talks a little bit more about what we were talking about in regards to the program for the end unit. I'm circling right now, the end unit of these actually is a front door to the side toward the public street. I know there's some discussions, some concerns before in regards to how this is going to be. I've got some illustrations to show you, but these units are strictly, and they were originally designed to be end units that focused out toward the side and not towards the front. So, and you can see in this diagram that this is a true front door with the access back to the public realm on the side, not in the other four units that are in part of the townhome units actually focusing on the public street that the actual unit faces onto. And this is an example of what you have when you have the units that face onto the public green spaces. You can see as well that end unit, again, the sole front door that comes out of this end unit is solely out to the side and out to the public street on that side. Here's an illustration, this is kind of looking along Road A, as you look back towards the community center, you can see the pavilion with the fireplace or fire pit that we'll have incorporated with that, and also the architectural elevations, the Dutch style and the traditional styles on that. This is the illustration, I think the most important illustration we have. This more or less gives you the representation of what these end units look like from the public street. As you can see on these units, especially the one here on the side, the front door will be a stoop or some kind of architectural element that'll be incorporated into the side here, and also the full face of this will have activation with open windows to the floor plan on the inside. Kind of, you know, a lot of the townhomes you see nowadays pretty much have a couple windows or a blank wall on the side. These will have lots of windows in order to help activate that facade, to make it look like a front door, and not so much as it's the blank side, and the activation of the actual door element and stoop area that comes out of these that is solely the front door to those units. And the same thing with the other style, the Dutch style over here, windows and doors and that front door itself to really get itself to come out. So that's really what you're going to see appearance-wise for these end units along the public street, and I know that was pretty much one of the major concerns we had at the workshop. Phasing, we're looking at roughly doing this in about eight phases. Amenities, they'll have a pretty diverse amenity feature. This will be just an illustration of what we're anticipating for our entry signage right there at the Fortress Boulevard. Community gardens. The tot lot. An example of what we're anticipating the dog park to kind of look like in the background back there. And also, I talked about the community center and the pavilion that goes associated with that. Access, there'll be one main access point to Fortress Boulevard, that is the southern portion there. We'll also have a secondary or emergency access point. This will have a emergency crash gate for fire safety to get through if there ever was a blockage of the main entrance into the community, so that they have a secondary means of egress into the site in an emergency situation. And we also have a secondary or stub street location towards the undeveloped county properties to the south that will potentially allow for connectivity to those, those areas once they do develop, or if they ever do develop in the future, will allow for connectivity back, potentially back to Highway 96 or Franklin Road. Roadways, as I talked about, there are two primarily public roadways. There'll be 40-foot public roadways, the main spine running back, and then also the north-south collector, and then the rest of the streets, as you see in blue, are actually public alleyways with 20-foot wa, 25, 20-foot minimum width on pavement, and that will allow us to accommodate fire safety and also trash services. There's an illustration of the streetscape, looking at doing some trees along the streets on the, on the actual lots themselves, to kind of give that little street appearance. And again, this is an illustration showing the 20-foot rear setback from the garage to the edge of the alleyway, so that we have room for parking two cars outside the garage besides the two spaces inside. Parcel B, as Matthew talked about, we're looking just to amend this portion just from the use standpoint. The amount of uses that were, were part of the original approval back in 2000, we're looking at moving, asking for these to be improved as to allow us to be more along with the commercial fringe district, allowing some more commercial resident, you know, commercial uses along the lines of office space, restaurants, those kinds of things. So that's pretty much the primary focus of what we're asking for in regards to that, just kind of get us more in tune with, you know, what's available today so that we can kind of move these lots along like Matthew spoke about. You know, we've only taken down four lots since 2000 in regards to this. Our applicants looking just for opportunities to have more, you know, more clientele that have presented themselves to him to take these lots down. Mr. Swanson and the builder are here this evening from Lennar. If you guys have any questions for them, and I'm definitely here for any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Any question from members of the Planning Commission for the applicant? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules that we conduct our public hearings by. I'll open each and every public hearing tonight, invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against the proposal. If you would, come to the microphone, state your name clearly, and give your address for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes. We have quite a few people here tonight that would like to speak, so please be as brief as you can with your comments, but no more than three minutes. If you have questions, please make those questions through the Planning Commission at the conclusion of the public hearing. The staff will make notes of your questions and try to answer those after the public hearing is concluded. After the public hearing is closed, there'll be no more comments from the public on that particular matter. If you have questions, we'll try to answer them though for you. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing for the first matter up tonight. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
May I have a question, can I ask?
Yes ma'am, give them to the staff members if you would, that's fine. Thank you ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joy Sapp, and I reside at 111 Pascal Drive in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I'm addressing the proposed amendments to the Victory Station PUD Parcel B, which was originally approved for 23 uses, and this proposed amendment, I believe, is for 84 uses. From what I can tell, all the available uses in the commercial fringe zoning district. It does not appear that much thought has gone into this request. We didn't hear much from the developer. We heard a lot about the Villas, but not Parcel B. One use is for agriculture uses, which I don't oppose, but probably it won't be used for agriculture use. I'm proposing that the entire transportation and public utilities category, which includes the post office, telephone service, telephone switching center, electric transmission, gas piping, water pumping station, self-service storage facility, be deleted from the proposed amendments due to all the uses that could operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 years, with possible noise and bright lighting. Under the commercial category, I am proposing that pet funeral home where animal cremations occur and funeral vehicle storage is allowed on the premises. Veterinary and clinic where outside dog runs are permitted and animal grooming be deleted from the proposed amendments. After enduring, ho-rams, bulldozers, dump trucks, and all other construction equipment running seven days a week from permitted hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily, I really don't want to listen to dogs barking for the rest of my life there. I am proposing to delete the uses of gas station, self-serve laundry department, or discount store, which is 35,000 square feet or greater. I have a question. Under the institution category, what is a public building? It is not defined in the zoning ordinance, so therefore, I don't know what's going there or what it is. I propose removing the lodge, club, country club, due to possible alcohol consumption near a daycare and church. I'm also concerned with restaurants serving alcohol. It would be a scenario like Bar Louie right by Sweet C.C.'s where children are subjected to adults standing on sidewalks scantily dressed and smoking. I have no objections to housing, but I am concerned with the height of any buildings adjacent to my property. The assisted living facility being built on the opposite side of Fortress is three stories tall. I do not think is it appropriate to have people peering from balconies or second or third story windows at me in my hot tub outside or while I'm trying to dine on the patio. In addition, outdoor lighting is another issue for us. I would very much appreciate the Planning Commission members to take my request into consideration as if you or your parents lived adjacent to this PUD and its proposed changes.
Thank you Ms. Sapp.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Danny Sapp. My wife just spoke, and I want to reiterate some of the things she just said. I think, one thing I would like to ask is that y'all separate Parcel B from Parcel T and have a separate vote on that rather than voting all over, for all over at once, because I feel like the issues in Parcel B is much different than the issues that will be in Parcel T. I want to reiterate what my wife just said about the public utility section. I worked for TVA for 35 years, so I'm real familiar with electric substations, and coming to a neighborhood near you, this is going on in the rest of the United States, it's just not here yet, is that there won't be any substations as we know them anymore real soon. It's, it's going to be batteries, huge batteries, and that's going to be our substance. The batteries will be charged, you'll never have a blinking clock in your home ever again once these facilities get built. They're, they're a thing of the future, but they're here already. And that'll go along with the Wi-Fi like Google and all that. We'll be building these stations, they'll be going 24 hours a day. The batteries will never let you drop power at your house ever again unless the line to your house is down. It'll never blink anymore because it'll be coming, your power will be coming from batteries, and those will be very attractive to something like that nursing home across the street because they'll never lose power. And those will be built in the near future here in Murfreesboro. One thing I saw on the proposal too was retail shops. It says retail shops other than enumerated elsewhere. I don't know what that means. There's not a definition in the code that says that, even though that's one of them that's listed on there. I don't know what enumerated elsewhere means. I would also like to ask to, for the family violence shelter, the family crisis shelter that's in the proposal, both of those to be eliminated. I asked also for you to remove the emergency shelter proposal because I don't know exactly what all that would entice. Could be tornado sirens and all that along with that. I'd like for you to possibly eliminate the retail shopping because there's, some of it's being proposed, buildings larger than what the whole parcel is, so I think that that needs to be removed. The last thing I'd like to talk to you about is the landscape buffer. Well, back whenever this was developed, back in 2000 or so, the city council put in that a landscape buffer be put in by Pascal Estates from the development. Shortly thereafter, after that was put in, the buffer and the fence and everything, things pretty well were abandoned, especially during all that recession time. Most of the vegetation has died. What didn't die, it grew up in honeysuckle and you name it. And over on Pascal Drive, we get a lot of snakes in our property now, a lot of other wild animals from, because that's just grown up. Some of it has been removed by bulldozer years or so ago, but it's never been replaced. You might ask me, well, why hadn't you called about that? Well, I did. I called the zoning. They say it's a urban, urban environmental issue, and then Urban Environmental says it's a zoning issue. You call zoning, they say it's a health department issue, you know, and if someone says it's a stormwater issue, I don't know. You get to run around. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Sapp. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Kim Thompson, and I live in Blackman Farms. I appreciate both of you for your comments. Thank you. I am concerned because when I bought my house in 2008, they promised and stated that that was a protected tree line and that nothing would be built on the other side. Apparently, it's a farm, I believe now, that is over there, or land on the other side of the creek. So if it's true what you say, that this has been in works for 15 years or so, that's well before the time I bought my house. So I don't know why they would tell me that is a protected tree line when it looks like it's going out, according to the photos. The street I live on is Creek Oak, and it backs up. All of our, all the houses on that side are a protected, protected tree line, which is wonderful for us that enjoy the deer and the turkey and the other animals back there, which is another concern of mine. How will they, and I'm assuming they will be removed, how will they be removed, and where will they go to preserve them? They've been back there quite a while, as far as I know. My other concerns are the building equipment. I know on the east side of Blackman Farms, they built on that side, and many residents over there complained of the noise to the point that they had to leave their homes many days because they were just so tired of hearing it, and some stated they questioned whether they had foundational problems because of the vibration during the building time. I don't remember hearing the length of time that would be taken up by this new building. Are we talking a year, two years, more, that we would be subjected to that? My other question, how will that affect potentially the property value in Blackman Farms? I'd like to know also, there is a creek back there, and you said it would be a play area or an open area where children could play, and that, will that creek remain there? Will you fill it up with dirt and that creek will go away? It seems a bit hazardous to have a creek and children playing nearby. So those are some of the concerns that I hope at some point this evening you will be able to address. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Thompson. Anybody else?
Yes, my name's Virgil Hardaway. I live in Blackman Farms also, and I just want to echo the sentiments of the young lady just, that just spoke. One of the great aspects of living there on the creek is the enjoyment of the animals that come out and play. And we seem to be, in Murfreesboro, we got a lot of building going on. I understand, we want to grow, but we also have to think about preserving nature. And there's a lot of animals that live back there. They don't bother anything. They come out and they play, they go back in their homes. So if you put this parcel T down there, exactly what will happen to them? Where will they go? The problems I have with it from a personal standpoint is that it's 250 feet from my property. And... And like the young lady said, when we bought it, it was supposed to be nothing built back there. We were told that. And now the rules are changing. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Rod Rogers. I work, live at 407 Carmel Drive. I appreciate the comments from those before me. In general, I just would like to make sure that the city of the council takes into consideration infrastructure. In the 10 years that I've lived in Murfreesboro, I've seen a lot of building going on and I'm quite appalled sometimes at the building that is allowed and then no infrastructure support it. Turning lanes, size of roads, consideration for the traffic that it's going to, the increased traffic. Both of these proposals will increase the amount of traffic in that area, which already has seen a lot of increase from density of housing further down Fortress and also on the other side of 96. So this, there is a lot of impact that both of these proposals would have in terms of the infrastructure and traffic and congestion in that area. Please take that into consideration as you make your decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Anybody? Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, I'll close this public hearing. I'll ask the representatives of the applicant to come up and try to answer some of these questions if they could.
Chairman Lamb, I think, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a couple of them first.
Sure.
Mr. and Mrs. Sapp mentioned uses that they found objectionable in the list. And certainly that's in the planning commission's purview to strike whatever lists or whatever uses from that list that it wishes to. We can scale back from what they've presented. Of course, we can't add to it, but we can scale back. So if you find any of the uses on, that they have provided to you that you want off the permitted list of uses, you can do that. To answer a couple of questions, a public building would be like a government building, like a government office building. Like the building we're in right here is a public building. Retail shop other than enumerated elsewhere, you know, we have a finite list of uses in our zoning ordinance. We can't include every single use that there is in our zoning ordinance. So that's kind of a catch-all, that anything that's not specifically called out in the chart would fall into that category as far as retail uses. The landscape buffer, I don't recall what the commitment was by Mr. Swanson originally back in 2000. That may be something that he wishes to elaborate on. The planning commission does also have within its purview the authority to place reasonable conditions on approval. So with the increased intensity of uses, you do have the authority to place a certain kind of buffer along that property line if you feel that the increase in intensity of uses would warrant a stricter buffer than what would be along that property line. Ms. Thompson and Mr. Hardaway mentioned parcel T and it remaining as undeveloped land. The plan that's in place right now was approved in 2007. So I'm not sure who told them that, but I think that at least since 2007, there have been development intentions on this property. The build-out time, that's something that the developer would have to address. How property values in Blackman Farm are affected, I don't know that any of us could say. We're not, I'm not an appraiser and I don't think any of us on staff are. I believe I did see an appraiser here in the audience over there who comes in from time to time. As far as disturbing the creek, there are areas that will have to be protected for stormwater quality and buffers along that creek. And I believe there is quite a bit of vegetation around that creek right now. As far as the animals, where will they go? I don't know. I mean, that's something that, as a result of development, I would hazard a guess that animals are displaced on a regular basis and have to find somewhere else to go. But I don't know that I can answer that question. Infrastructure and traffic, we do, when site plans come in, we look at what infrastructure needs are necessary. Mr. Balachandra, our traffic engineer is here. And so we look at what the impact is of each individual development and what public infrastructure improvements would be warranted. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I think I covered all the ones that I could address.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to speak in regards to what we were talking about, sorry. Speaking in regards to the creek itself, the creek itself will be undisturbed as Matthew alluded to. We do have, you know, we already have perimeter set up along those as the plan itself shows. If I can bring that back up so I can kind of denote what we're talking about in regards to the developable area versus what is actually going to, you know, is going to remain as open space. I'll get that back on the monitors. As you can see, the actual project itself, this is, this line right here, as you can see, is the floodway, the FEMA map floodway that goes along with Pucky Creek. Our plans are not to disturb any land beyond that towards Blackman Farms. So those residents who live in Blackman Farms, the trees and everything else associated with the creek itself will be left intact up into that floodway zone that we have on the other side of the creek. So in regards to anything that's on the Blackman Farms side of things, there won't be anything being changed on that side of the creekway itself. And we're restricted to do anything in that floodway zone by FEMA and the federal government in regards to grading and disturbance over on that side. So not only do we have FEMA to look at in regards to those kinds of buffers, we also have our own city buffers that are part of the, from the top of bank out. There's a 50-foot top of bank non-disturbance area on that creekway itself besides what's part of the federal guidelines for FEMA and anything else on that side. So in regards to what Blackman Farms will see in regards to development of parcel T from our side, you'll see the exact same thing more or less in regards to the amount of trees and the vegetation and the wildlife that's associated with that creekway. So that's our plan. We wanted to kind of keep this, you know, it's a natural vegetative area that's already part of the land and that's part of something that we can't even, you know, we're not having to bother trying to cross to get over to do anything on the other side of the creek in regards to the rest of the property over there, so on that side. Infrastructure side, like Matthew spoke about, I mean, this parcel was originally evaluated back in 2007. It was originally approved. So the traffic counts that are part of this project were already looked at back at those, at that point in time. Now, the net increase of nine units in density from then to now is a minimal amount of increase in regards to what the traffic studies and such back then in regards to the warrants for, you know, Fortress Boulevard is a five-lane divided roadway with a center turn lane residing. So you have ins and outs on that in regards to the development itself. Regards to the types of uses, Mr. Swanson would like to speak in regards to some of those uses that would want to be stricken from this notation and also would like to talk in regards to the buffer on partial B on that side. And I'll invite Mr. Swanson up to the podium to talk about those.
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners, Staff, Joe Swanson, 1188 Park Avenue. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I tried to keep up with all of those, but Ms. Sapp went pretty quick. There were just a couple that I would like to keep in. One would be the retail as enumerated and the restaurants. But I will, would not, would like to not include a drive-through restaurant. But other restaurants I would like to keep in.
Drive-through or drive-in, Mr. Swanson? Drive-in would be like a Sonic. Drive-through?
Drive-in.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, where they drive around, place their order, and then pick up. That is, I would stricken that from the plan.
So you mean both or?
No, no, no Sonic.
And no drive-through?
No drive-through.
Or parties or anything like that?
Correct. Correct. You'd have to park, go into the restaurant. Yeah, now there may be carryout, but yeah. Okay. Second thing was on the buffers and screening, yes, I realize that some of that has depleted. We actually went out, of course, the city sends us a letter. Some of the fence fell down. We went out and repaired it. We did clear away some last year. Unfortunately, this is with a third-party management firm. I am having to go out and make some of those repairs. We are in the middle of eliminating that third-party management firm. So that is a work under progress and I am aware of it. And the ordinances, if I remember right, have kind of changed. Now, this was in 2000, so there were things that were implemented in there in the way of installing those berms back then that traditionally today we wouldn't do, although you could mandate it. But back then, it was mandated that that happened. Today, we can, the commission and council can approve it, but we typically don't put those in until an improvement is put on the lot. Now, there are variations of that, but that's a kind of a typical. The last thing is the build-out. You know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm thinking three to five years is probably the build-out that I would be looking at on this project. Is there anything else that I may have missed or that you would like to ask me about specifically?
So Joe, you may not have seen her, the letter, but
Didn't.
But so, just so we're clear on what you're proposing, because it sounds like you're in agreement to everything that she said other than the three items that you mentioned.
Yes. Thank you, Matthew. Yes, I would like to keep the restaurant, but no drive-in and no drive-through. And the retail. Everything else we can strike.
Mr. Swanson, if you're talking about a restaurant when you refer to restaurant, like Old Charlie's or someplace similar to that, most of those will tell you that in order to succeed, they have to have a bar area and serve alcohol. One of her requests is to not serve alcohol at the restaurant. Would that be something that you'd want to keep in there?
Yes.
So you do want to serve alcohol if you do have a restaurant?
I would like for it to be allowed, yes.
I would understand.
And Mr. Smotherman, just to clarify, we do have a separate use called a tavern, which would be more of a bar where the primary item for sale would be alcohol and the food would be secondary. And so I don't believe that list, that use is included in the list.
I think that's what she was referring to when she said lounge clubs and country clubs.
Lodge, club, and country club would be more like Mason's Lodge or the Stones River Country Club. But the tavern, I don't believe tavern is included in the
I don't believe so.
It's not.
It's not, Mr. Swanson. It's not in there. Okay, any other, any questions for Mr. Swanson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for the staff from the planning commission?
When this plan came before the planning commission, was there a site plan that went with it that any road improvements were talked about at that point in time or not?
As far as parcel B or parcel T or?
Correct. Either one.
Either one. Parcel B, it's so speculative at this point because the end-users are not known.
I see.
The impact of a eight-to-five Monday through Friday office would be a much different impact than a restaurant use.
I see.
Parcel T, I'm not sure what type of road improvements that might warrant. Of course, there's a center turn lane on Fortress Boulevard right now, which would accommodate southbound left-turn lanes. Mr. Balachandra may be able to elaborate on whether or not he would require any additional road improvements in the public right-of-way.
Not Mr. Balachandra, but I'll play him for a second. When parcel T's preliminary plat came through
Would you please introduce yourself?
Matt Taylor from SEC, sorry. When parcel T originally was zoned, we had submitted a preliminary plat shortly after that to planning commission and was approved. And that was approved with the condition of a right turn lane on Fortress Boulevard into our main entrance there. And so we would anticipate with a similar density having that same requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And Chairman Lamb, with regards to the buffer, Mr. Swanson is correct in that typically the buffer goes in with the development on each individual lot. And if this were zoned commercial fringe as opposed to being as a part of the planned development, typically a type D buffer would be required from commercial fringe to a single-family residential zone. And so, you know, if you do wish to make a certain type of buffering a condition of approval, that is within your authority?
Would it be appropriate around?
Yeah.
Item for parcel B?
Can you want to go ahead and state that?
Yes, Mr. Blomley, I agree that we should have a D buffer around parcel B on the areas backing up to the residential. And what's A and C? Those are, what, A is the assisted? Do you see A six and C seven down there, the lots?
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on page 13. I just wanted to clarify what I was saying about the buffer. So it's definitely talking about the buffer that backs up to the residential section that should be a D buffer around section B or parcel B. But on the side that adjoins parcel A, that's already a commercial use there, is it not?
Parcel A is, I believe it's the Murfreesboro Missionary Baptist Church and it has been developed.
So it's a residential then, right? So it would need a D buffer if it's a church?
Typically, if it were zoned residential, there would be a D buffer. But with that being a church, churches are a special use permit in residential zones. It's a little bit of a different use than a residential use and so that would be at your discretion if you wanted to require additional buffering adjacent to that northern property line.
So can you remind us then on parcel A, is that part of the planned development or is that one of the parcels that came in not a part of the planned development?
Parcel A was a part of the original 2000 plan development.
So if it changed to any other use other than a church, it would have to come before us so we could?
To any other use than what is permitted in that parcel A. I think there are probably a list of other uses that may be permitted if the church ever vacates.
I would think the D buffer needs to be required along the rear of parcel B. And not necessarily on the sides, but would be what I, I'd throw that out there for discussion. Y'all have any comments?
I agree with Kathy. I don't see the need for the buffer on the sides, but I do think across the back of section B, it would be appropriate.
Okay, what other comments?
Are we clear on all the uses in the chart?
I gave mine to Mr. Swanson, but I believe that, if I could borrow someone's just real quick. The letter or the list of uses?
The letter from Ms. Sapp. Thank you.
So everything under transportation and public utilities on Ms. Sapp's list, it sounds like Mr. Swanson agreed to delete from the list.
Okay.
The pet funeral home, veterinary clinic, and animal grooming, I think he was in agreement to delete those. I think he was in agreement to delete gas station, self-serve laundry, department or discount store, lodge, club, country club, drive-in restaurants, and drive-through restaurants. But restaurants itself would remain as would retail shop other than enumerated elsewhere. And I believe public building would remain now that it's been clarified what it is. I believe that covered it. Does that?
And what about agricultural uses? Because that's And what about agricultural uses? Because that's, you know, kind of just a vague, in her letter, it's vague. So, I mean, I know it probably is not going to be used for that, but do we want to leave it in, or do we want to take it out?
Agricultural uses, and this is something that we see on a regular basis, it, property that may be zoned commercial in the interim while it's waiting to be developed can sometimes be used for agricultural purposes and give the property some utility in the interim while it's waiting to be developed. I think on a number of portions of Mr. Swanson's land here, he has rented it out to farmers. This would be a little bit of a unique situation because they're developed lots, it's not just vacant pasture land, so...
So we can just leave that? I mean, it's just, on her letter, I just want to make sure. I mean, it's not clear, are we leaving it in or taking it out? So we just need to be clear about that. I don't have a problem leaving it in unless you all see some problem.
I don't want to get off subject. There was a design guidelines that went with Victory Station in regards to what buffers went where back from 2000. The buffer with Pascal Estates on B, on parcel B, it was a type-D buffer with a six-foot-tall privacy fence. The parcel A, between B and A, there was no buffer required because it was all part of the same PUD design level on that side. So there is no buffer between what is B and the church property as it is today on that side. Between A and Pascal Estates, there was supposed to be a type-A buffer installed on that side. So behind the church property, deadly, there should have been when the property was developed, a type-A buffer between that and the backside. This is the deeper part of the lots that, on Pascal Estates there. And then the same thing with, you know, when we incorporated parcel T, there was the original parcel T from 2007, we incorporated a type-C buffer along the Pascal Estates lot frontage, on those lots that back up to Pascal Estates. And that is part of this package as well. So along the southern boundary of parcel T that backs up to Pascal Estates subdivision, we've already incorporated the same type-C buffer along that side. So just to clarify, going back to that original document from 2000, the parcel B was required to have a D buffer with a six-foot-tall fence. So...
Okay.
If that's what you're asking, with, you know, Mr. Swanson's...
Sounds like it's already in there.
Okay, great.
I'm going to move for approval, with the exceptions of the agreed-to deletions that Mr. Swanson has agreed to.
Second motion. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. The second public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 4.53 acres located along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive to be rezoned from commercial fringe to a PCD, Salem Creek Commons PCD. Development Management Group is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next public hearing tonight is for three lots that are located at the southeast corner of New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive. And I've got the property pulled up. It's the area in blue. As you can see, it's three platted lots there on the south side of New Salem Highway. The three lots are currently zoned commercial fringe, and the applicant has requested to rezone these three lots to PCD, Planned Commercial Development. And kind of the reason for this request is on the easternmost lot here, the applicant wishes to construct a vehicle wash, as most people would call it, a car wash. The vehicle wash is not a permitted use in the CF zone. So the applicants first approached us about rezoning it to Commercial Highway, and considering the adjacent commercial fringe zoning and the nature of the development out there, we figured that, it was our opinion that commercial fringe was an appropriate zone for that property. The applicants then came back and said, well, we're willing to zone it as a planned commercial development and commit to quality in order to allow the one use, the vehicle wash, that is not permitted in the commercial fringe zone. So they have submitted the Plan Development booklet, Salem Creek Commons, for these three lots, that specifies the uses for these three lots, the architecture, and the layout of those three lots. And Mr. Gilbert will be given a presentation in just a moment, but the uses are largely consistent with the commercial fringe zoning district. The only use that is not permitted in commercial fringe that has been added is that vehicle wash. The adjacent land uses and zoning classifications, to the south of the subject property is zoned commercial fringe. It's developed as a church. Directly to the east of the subject property are several commercial uses, including a Dollar General and a Burger King. And to the north of the subject property is the Walmart Neighborhood Market, which is also zoned commercial fringe. And directly to the west of the subject property across Salem Creek Drive is the Fellowship United Methodist Church. The Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which has not yet been adopted, recommends that the subject property develop as, quote-unquote, "neighborhood commercial." And the proposed PCD plan is generally consistent with that neighborhood commercial classification. The developer hosted a neighborhood meeting at Scales Elementary on March 20th regarding the proposed request. Mr. Gilbert is going to give a brief PowerPoint presentation, after which I'll be happy to answer any questions, as will Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Matthew. I want to thank the, my name is Mike Gilbert, 4209 Gallatin Pike National Tennessee. Wanted to thank the commission for hearing our case, to thank the staff for working with us. It's been a big benefit to have the staff.
Gilbert, could you speak more into the microphone?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I know you're tall and it's hard to reach down there. Thank you.
I apologize. Forgive my pointing down. So anyway, Matthew did a good job sort of locating the site. On this particular slide is further the location of our proposed project. It's three lots. They're fairly small, one and a half acre in, on average. They're cornered on New Salem Highway and Salem Creek, flanked by Dollar General and commercial fringe and commercial highway zones as well. The uses to the south and to the west are churches. Everything else is basically commercial. We, our proposal, basically, in terms of uses, follows the CF sort of format in the zoning code, but we are proposing a new use, which is the vehicle wash, be added to the PCD. But we're also proposing to eliminate a couple of uses out of that zone piece, and that would be liquor store and packaged beer. The sites themselves, as I said, are about an acre and a half. Lot two would be the car wash lot. Lot three would be a commercial center, which would consist of a combination-use single building, which would have restaurant and retail function. Lot four would be a convenience store with gas, and that's the lot on the corner. This is the overall master plan that shows lot three being the car wash. There's a significant open-air storm structure that runs through the site. When we purchased this property quite some time ago, we came in with a mass-grading exercise, if you will, and a part of that exercise was to improve the significant storm structure as it tries to flow through, across, and adjacent to our project here, and eventually gets up under the road at New Salem Highway. But that open storm structure is an L-shaped element that bounds two sides of this lot. And then the Dollar General is on the right. The commercial center would be in the middle, a single-story freestanding feature there, and then the convenience store with gas would be on the corner. It's about a 4,000-square-foot structure. And that's the structure, basically, where we would limit the package, or eliminate the packaged beer. Some of the architecture, this would be the architecture for the car wash. It's masonry, construction, storefront glazing, a little EPIS for the signage panel, metal tower feature here, and canvas canopies and awnings over some of the doors. This building has a little bit of a unique shape in that it's a long and narrow building. It runs, you know, deep into the site, as shown on the site plan. So it has a minimal footprint, if you will, that actually faces New Salem. So the intent was to try to dress that up as much as possible to help it look like the legitimate front of the building. There's also additional landscaping in that area as well. There's a canopy system that's out there at the vacuum stations on site, and they would look at this, like this, with sloped roofs and shingles. The center building would be similar to this in architecture, brick, stone, masonry products, EPIS sign bands, rigid metal canopies, and soft awnings, parapets with caps. This would be an imagery of the convenience store, same materials as the center building, which is the commercial building there, brick, stone, canopies, parapets. The gas station awning would be similar as well in materials, and would have a sloped roof. Pure elevations there demonstrate the architecture and elevations of the canopy. The columns for the canopies would be brick up to a certain height, and then the canopies would sit on top of that. So I think it's a fairly straightforward. We did have a public meeting. We do want to be sensitive to our neighbors, and that's why we're offering to eliminate some of those contentious uses, potentially, if you will. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Guess you did a good job. Nobody? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions by members of the Planning Commission?
If not, I'll make a motion to approve subject to any staff comments.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The third public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 22.5 acres located along Manson Pike and Brinkley Road to be rezoned from RS-15 to PRD, Blackman Station PRD. Loz Bolden is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Chairman Lamb, our third plan development tonight is for, as you mentioned, the Blackman Station PRD, which, a property that's frontage on both Brinkley Road and Manson Pike, but is not quite on the corner of those two roads, kind of wraps around the corner. The one that's right on the corner is the gas station, and wrapping around that corner is undeveloped property that's zoned commercial local. Subject property in purple wraps around that property. It borders the PACRAT self-storage development to its south that is zoned commercial fringe, and the Princeton Oaks subdivision to the west, which is zoned RS-12. Directly across Brinkley Road is a PRD, Wilkerson Downs, that was just zoned as a PRD in 2016 for a townhouse development. Mr. Bolden brings to you tonight a proposal for a planned residential development that will contain both single-family lots, single-family detached lots, and single-family attached townhouses that will be part of a horizontal property regime. The attached portion is on the Brinkley Road side of the project, and the single-family detached portion, which would be on lots, a minimum of 8,000 square feet in size, will be located on the western boundary of the subject property adjacent to the single-family to the west in Princeton Oaks. Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering will go over the details of the project here momentarily. I did want to mention that the land use map contained in the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which, as I previously mentioned, has not yet been adopted, but we're using it as best available information, recommends that the eastern portion of the subject property along Brinkley Road develop as general commercial. So the PRD plan is not consistent with that recommendation. However, the balance of the subject property is recommended to be developed as auto-urban residential, which includes both single-family detached and attached homes at a density of between 3.54 and 8.64 dwelling units per acre. It's very specific, as you can tell. The proposed development is generally consistent with the auto-urban residential classification, as it does propose single-family attached and detached homes. And the proposed density is 8.3 dwelling units per acre. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'd invite Mr. Roundtree to give you a little bit of additional detail on the proposed development. Good, thanks.
My name is Clyde Roundtree, I'm a host of still engineering, Chairman Lamb, commissioners, staff. I'm here on behalf of Taz Lundee and Loz Bolden regarding Blackman Station development that Matthew spoke about. And what we're looking at is a new development, as Matthew mentioned, 22 acres in size. And I just want to bring some clarification to what he was speaking about. Over on this side, basically in the yellow portion, those are the single-family homes that are detached, basically 8,000-square-foot lots. The home sizes on those in particular will be a minimum of 16,000 square feet, and those are against the Princeton Oaks subdivision that was mentioned. In our neighborhood meeting, we had quite a few people from Princeton Oaks that showed up, you know, with concerns about their adjacent use. So we feel like that's appropriate for us to have the single-family detached residential against the single-family detached residential that's in Princeton Oaks. The product here we have is basically a detached, I mean, an attached product. The home size, minimum size, would be around a little over 1,000 square feet, and they'd have common parking areas. And that's about 121 units of that type of home style. And then the last home style we have is basically single-family attached homes with one-car garages, with the ability to load two cars in the driveway. So just say, I'm sorry about the darkness of this picture, the photo came out poorly, but that is your single-family attached home with your common parking, single-family attached home with the single-car garage, and then your standalone home as a detached home. Overall, our unit density is a little bit over eight units per acre, so about 8.31 units per acre. We do have a small amenity area that has a pavement and a dog run. There'll be a lot of room dedicated towards, really towards detention. There's quite a concern that was brought up, basically from some of our site analysis, but also from the neighbors, that there's quite a bit of flooding that comes along where the new PACRAT is. So we want to make sure we handle that drainage properly. And as far as working with the city staff, one of the biggest concerns was making sure this doesn't become a cut-through, where people are trying to avoid the intersection that's associated with Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. So we have worked with ROM and the other staff members to make sure that there was a real circuitous way to get through the subdivision, that it wouldn't be an issue in terms of people wanting to go jetting through there. So with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. I just want to keep it a brief presentation, but three different product styles on 22 acres, little over eight units per acre, single-family detached and attached, some with garages, some without, and overall 186 units for unit density of 8.31 acres, units per acre. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have, and I'll answer any questions that come up through the public hearing. Thank you.
Chairman Lamb, one thing that I'd like to add that I think it's important to point out, and Mr. Roundtree has worked with me on this, is the notice that the sides of the townhomes face both Manson and Brinkley. And what this plan is committing to is similar to the Wilkerson Downs across the street, where the rears of the units faced Brinkley Road. We required birmingham and landscaping along there...
It looks like there's, if my math is correct, around 11 spots or spaces in front of each of the five-unit buildings. Does that sound right to you?
Can we, we've actually, that was one of the concerns the staff had as well, so we've ramped up the parking, so we're overparked on this particular site. I have us down for a required parking of 474 parking spaces and we're at 503.
Okay.
So we created some, some of that is related to the, you know, where the amenity center is and then we just picked up overflow parking where we could, just to make sure it wouldn't be an issue. So we're, we're overparked on this one by at least 30 spaces.
So where I was going with that is it looks like you might have a little over two spaces for each unit in reference to the common parking that would face the unit, face the building itself. That's where I'm going.
Well, the ratios we've respected as far as the 1.1 per bedroom, so we're good there. As far as their proximity to the actual unit space, you know, you may have to walk a few spaces down in order to get to your unit.
Right.
But as far as the parking requirement, it's been met.
Clyde, which is the parking arrangement that you're proposing? What's in this booklet or what you've got on your screen?
It's what's in the booklet. There's, we added, there's a new parking space here that was added in order to accommodate additional parking.
Yeah, I think if we could put up the, what's on my laptop? We could put that up on the big screen, too. Thank you. The, what's in the book is, is what is correct. I think Mr. Roundtree has an outdated concept plan on his board, but what would be the operative site plan would be what's in your, what's in your booklets that has been, that have been provided to you, not what's on this board.
Mr. Roundtree, would you be opposed to moving the dog park southward down below this area that's marked guest parking in our booklet here, right above the detention pond? And the reason I say that is I've always got a concern when a dog park is placed right next to a playground. And I think that just from a common sense standpoint, it would make better sense to move that across the parking lot there away from where the playground is.
That's not a problem. We have that additional parking there and we have that detention pond area there, so I don't see where that would...
And with the parking there, it almost makes it more convenient for people who do want to carry their dogs down and walk them before they travel or finish up a trip.
Mr. Smotherman, would that be in this area right here? If we, I think it's, if they're right here?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Good point, Eddie. Any other questions from Mr. Roundtree before we open the public hearing?
I'm just going to ask one quick question that's either Matthew or Mr. Roundtree. Page 14 in our book, that picture in the top that's the attached single-family, that garage, is that a single fam, I mean, a single-car garage in the pictures that we're looking at there or is that a?
The photograph does look like a single-car garage.
Okay, all right.
With a carriage garage door.
I'm easily deceived, so, by the pictures.
Mr. Smotherman, that's a carriage garage door indicated on page 14.
I think they're very attractive, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Clyde did a good job.
Anybody? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any more questions or comments from the planning commission?
Saying, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye, presume with staff comments and the changes that Mr. Smotherman wanted to make. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D, zoning application for approximately 11.6 acres located along North Highland Avenue and East Clark Boulevard to be rezoned from OGR to PRD, known as the Cove at Oakland's PRD, Brian Burns is the applicant. Mr. Anthony, good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. You're with me for a little while, so hopefully you're in good hands.
A long while.
A long while. The applicant, Brian Burns, represented by Clyde Roundtree of Huddleston Steel, wishes to rezone 11.6 acres located along North Highland Avenue, East Clark Boulevard and a portion of Dudley Street as well. They're seeking rezoning to Planned Residential District or PRD to allow a 91-unit townhouse development. This development would include 47 brownstone-type units along North Highland Avenue. These would be built closer to the street with rear parking and then 44 conventional townhomes located in the center and along the north side of the property. So a variety of zoning districts that surround the site. We have RS-15, RM-16, OGR, CMR, PCD and PRD, so sort of a mixed bag of zoning in this area. Most of this site is encumbered by floodplain. There is also a portion of floodway on the site and additionally, this is a historically sensitive site, so we'll ask Clyde to address those when he comes up in a moment. Staff reviewed the Highland Avenue Planning Studies recommendations for this area. That study supports mixed-use development here. With the surrounding commercial and office development, this use would appear to be consistent with the recommendations of the Highland Study. The planning commission would need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for the city council and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
I'm here representing Mr. Brian Burns related to the Cove at Oakland's and this has been a unique project from the get-go. Mr. Burns has had a kind of a unique vision for this piece of property. He, I'm not sure when Brian first saw the property, but he has, he's developing across East Clark and I think that's kind of what catalyzed the thought of actually coming over across, across the road. We're excited about the project just because we feel like it fulfills some of the expectations of the North Highland Study in terms of creating a mixed-use potential environment, but also creating a green belt linkage all the way through to Memorial. So that is kind of the hybrid of this project. It's not only a residential development, but it also has some potential for green belt linkage and as Donald mentioned, it is in a floodplain area, so that'll all have to be addressed in the site planning process. The floodway is not interrupted by this development, so we had to make sure that that was not a concern. As far as the actual land, Mr. Burns has said, stated to us as well as to the city staff, that the remainder of the bounds of the property that is along the creek corridor, he would like to dedicate to the city. That's outside the bounds of where his development will be, but all that green space would hopefully be create a way that the greenway can actually come through this piece of property. And Mr. Blomley and I spoke about that a little bit as far as tied it into where the McAllister is right now over on Memorial and actually creating a linkage there. As far as the products, the homes that are on this particular piece of property, in the darker brown is what we're calling the brownstones and this is something that Mr. Burns is also very passionate about. It creates a kind of an urban fabric that's very unique to this particular site, but also unique to Murfreesboro. It's something you're seeing more in Nashville. They have some in downtown Franklin, but they're more of a vertical type of architecture and I'll show you some images of those in just a moment. And then as Donald mentioned, the rest of the townhomes that are being recommended are more your conventional types. So there's 47 brownstone and 44 single-family attached units. Overall, the minimum square footage would be 1,400 square feet and our overall density would be about 7.7 units per acre. So it is estimated that there's between three to five acres of green space that will be a part of this project that will be given back to the city. With that in mind, I'd like to show you the brownstone type of architecture. And this has already been through a few renditions, working with the staff in terms of how the architectural character should work and we spent a little time looking at Google images of what, what brownstones really are, but really the key to a brownstone is it has a very vertical front, it has a varied roof line, it has an alternating front in terms of it undulates in and out. They address the street and that's really important because it will give us more of a street-type character, so all the, all the doors would address the sidewalk and North Highlands and, and they just have a unique architectural interest. This is a dark image, but there's basically variations in color, not like radical color contrast, but a complementary contrast of colors and bricks along the, along the whole frontage. Along the back, it's going to be all brick, fronts and sides and maybe two-car garages all rear entry. Mr. Burns would like to start off with this particular product and if it's successful, he'd like to build the whole development, potentially in that way, but the conventional type of townhome gives us the opportunity, if per se, the brownstones aren't successfully moving, you know, we want to make sure we cover our bases to have the alternative to go more of a conventional style as which will be across the street at, at his development there. And so the conventional style of townhomes, which are consistent with some of his other developments, General's Landing, General's Run, would be, they still have a craftsman character, craftsman style, they're all, you know, brick and stone and hardy board as well, and they have awnings and porches, but really the goal is to see how far the brownstones can take us as far as introducing a new type of architecture and then moving to the back portion of the property with the conventional type of, of design that you've seen already that Mr. Burns has done. So we're excited about the possibility of fusing the residential component with the, with the green space, allowing that green belt to go all the way through the property. It's a property that a lot of people have studied, a lot of people have looked at and Mr. Burns is the one who's really going to try to see if he can pull this together. So we're excited about presenting it. I'm available for any kind of questions you may have. I'll be available after the public hearing and answer questions the public may have as well.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Roundtree, I think if we could go ahead before we open the public hearing and have you talk about the wetlands and how much of this property is actually classified as wetlands and what, where that would be, how that would be worked around and what would happen to those wetland areas?
Mrs. Jones, if we can imagine this being somewhat the center line of the creek, it's not exactly the creek on the other side of the property. Our research has shown that all the, anything related to wetlands is really on the other side of the creek. It's not on this particular side. Like I mentioned, there is flood, floodplain on this side, but actually anything designated as more of a wetlands is really on the opposing side.
Okay.
And, and we, there's a dash line, you can't see it on this drawing, but that, that's representing really where the flood, where the floodway is.
Okay.
So we have, and we're going to have to respect all the FEMA, you know, requirements and all the development requirements, but, but we were happy to find out that, you know, anything that was more of the sensitive wetlands classification is really on the opposing side of the creek.
Okay, thanks for going ahead and clarifying that, appreciate it.
Any other questions at this time from Mr. Roundtree?
Mr. Roundtree, phase one would be the brownstone?
Yes, sir, Ms. Clark. This, the darker portion here along North Highlands is really priority one to introduce the product to the city and also to kind of get the ball rolling in terms of creating that more urban kind of feel. We think the North Highland Study is really kind of projecting that, that's more of a little walk kind of community ideally, so bringing some residential component to this particular area will help support all the commercial and office base that's already there. So it's a, it's, it's not, this is not a mixed-use development per se, but it's bringing in a user that would consider the area to be mixed-use. So yes, right, basically right here with the darker images is really where the brownstones would be.
And that would be facing east?
Correct, it's face North Highlands, facing east.
Any other questions?
Mr. Roundtree, I don't want to sound like the dog barking up the tree here, but being, they do have the playground in the bark park or dog park back here in the back section. But I don't see it drawn out anywhere. Is that what he's referring to, is amenities on there?
I have, Mr. Smotherman, I have the park area kind of drawn as, you know, in between the two different types of townhomes with a pavilion and as you mentioned, the dark park would, would be anywhere separate from the playground, would not be an issue.
And again, I think the, the lower left-hand corner down there next to that parking area is perfect for that.
Okay.
If, just to be consistent with what I said in the last public hearing.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Before I open the public hearing, I need to make a statement. I have a, will declare conflict of interest on my part, my company represents a seller in this transaction if it goes through, so I will not vote or I will not participate in any of the discussions on this, for this project. I will conduct the public hearing as chairman of the commission, but I will not participate in any voting or discussions about it. Mr. Wade, do you have a statement?
Yes, sir. I would be the same for voting as well. I've worked with this client in the past as well.
Okay, so we have two members of the planning commission that will not participate in the discussion and will be abstaining from voting. That being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would
Hello, Commissioner, my name is James Manning. I live at 603 North Spring Street. I am the executive director of Oakland's Mansion, but I want you to keep in mind that I'm not representing Oakland's Mansion tonight. It's hundreds of individuals with individual opinions, maybe some others are here tonight to share theirs with you, but as a downtown resident and as a historian, I just wanted us to be clear on the history of the land that's in question. It was a portion, the only remaining green space other than what's incorporated in Oakland's Park that remains undeveloped of a 274-acre land grant that was purchased by Ezekiel White, or earned by Ezekiel White and then sold to his commanding officer, Colonel Hardy Murphy, the man that Murfreesboro was named for. His daughter Sally Hardy Murphy inherited that land and built her home there with her husband, Dr. James Manning, prior to the Civil War. And they created a slave plantation there, they grew it to 1,500 acres and had hundreds of enslaved people that lived and worked there. We know very little about the Mannys because we've never found much of any firsthand documents or a plantation journal, so archaeologically, anything that we could learn would help us further the story of the Mannys, the plantation, their enslaved people. I have found out recently there's a lot more archaeology than there are archaeologists, but I have got archaeologists on the long-range plan to look at whatever areas available, whether it's this acreage, Oakland's Park, or the one acre that Oakland's owns now. We do know that there is a wetlands in a portion of this area. We know that there's a lot that could be learned archaeologically because the Corps of Engineers in developing Oakland's Park tested the area and they found that this was a Native American site, probably something that they lived in as well as camped in because they found indications that a structure was built there, not particularly on this 11-acre tract, but across the spring. So all of this area was a very rich, archaeologically sensitive area that also later saw forest raid. And so Oakland's Mansion is on the National Register of Historic Places for its architecture and its historical significance. I had thought that this land was something that was too valuable historically and archaeologically to ever be considered for development for something like condos. I found out that's not the case and I've been very disheartened in finding out that people are frightened to speak out about it. We have members, board members even, who don't want to speak out because they're afraid that me being public will cause Oakland's to lose public or private funding. So I hope that anybody that speaks tonight, if they're associated at Oakland's, you'll keep in mind that again, Oakland's has hundreds of people. I'm representing my thoughts, not theirs, and anyone else that represents them would be doing the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Who would like to be next?
Chairman Lamb, commission members, planning staff. My name's Jim Bailey and my wife and I reside at 514 Winfrey, which is about a block away from this development. Just like to say, I've served the District Zoning Commission for over 20 years, I've served on the Construction Board of Justice Appeals for over 20 years and I have to say it's pretty sweet to be on this side of the podium compared to being on that side of the podium. And I say that because I think the decision that you are faced with tonight is really an important decision. I've not had a chance to talk with the planning staff, unfortunately. I've seen the documents presented tonight about the proposed plans. I've seen the documents presented tonight about the proposed plans. And my, I'm wearing two hats. I'm wearing a hat as a property owner in the area and the hat as a professional architect. My business has been in town for 42 years. We're a 12-person architecture firm. We've done a significant number of projects in this city. So I'm wearing two hats. My first hat as a property owner is, I am all for residential development in the area this proposed for residential development. I think it's a great idea. Reses bring activity back to downtown as opposed to offices where the activity leaves after 5:00. I think that's very important for this area of town. I think, there have been a lot of statements about how downtown is being refurbished, it's more violent, it's more active. Bill Jakes said that there are no properties in the downtown area for sale, and those that were for sale are snatched up instantly, and people are providing themselves, are providing a lot of money to refurbish these properties. So for we as downtown property owners, that's right on. That's great. That increases our property values hugely, and it's about time. It's about time. It's a long-term resident of downtown. So then you begin to think, why do people want to come downtown? Well, the downtown area has large shade trees, we have wonderful homes that are separated from each other, we have sidewalks, we have short walking distances to a vibrant downtown area where we have restaurants, music, shops, attorney's offices, architects' offices. So there are a numerous number of reasons why it's great to be downtown. I think if you drive around downtown, you can understand why that urban fabric is really a great urban fabric for downtown. I'm glad the gentleman of the Civil Seals brought up this term, urban fabric, because we have an established urban fabric in the downtown area where this proposal, proposed zoning change is occurring. I think, to be relative, and to keep the urban fabric developing in the right way, I think residential is important. I think this development is totally inappropriate for the way it's planned and designed. This concept of brownstones, a three-story building, which is completely inappropriate for the downtown urban fabric. There are no three-story buildings in the downtown, except possibly some that have been built recently, the one that I'm in, unfortunately, in my office. And then brownstones have occurred in large, major metropolitan areas where people have, were thrown together in a downtown area that live close, the houses are close to the street, but the streets are generally slow in traffic. It's a great time to wave at your neighbors you go by in your car. This is not going to be that type of urban fabric. If you look at the development along Highland, we have the Odd Duck, new police department, we have medical that is now kind of changing from medical to offices, though there are still some medical there. Because of the development along Broad Street, Highland now becomes a major traffic fair going into and out of the downtown area. And as a resident who tries to get from Winfrey onto Highland during 8:00 traffic and 5:00 traffic, it is a major thoroughfare now. So I am against the planning of this development in its present form. I am for the changed residential. Perhaps there might be a different residential zoning that might give a little more control of that area than the planned residential development. I'm sorry to run over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
My name is Jennifer Marchant. I live at 1323 Lake Shore Drive. I just want to say that I think Murfreesboro needs to cherish our green spaces and the wildlife. They are part of the treasures that Murfreesboro has. It's one of the things that made me want to come and live here, and I see those spaces and that wildlife getting more and more squinched out, so to speak. I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
I don't like public speaking, so I apologize. I live at 1806 East Main Street. I've lived there for over 35 years, and the little-
I'm sorry, ma'am. Would you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Georgia Dennis. And Sinking Creek that runs down behind Oakland, runs through my backyard. The head of it is up above me, up on Mercury, and in that area up there. And when we moved into the house, we were aware that it ran through the backyard, and that quite often, it, the ditch stayed full, or it flooded partially into the yard. But I want everybody to be aware, regardless of, and I got the words from the first account tonight, the floodway zone, as the FEMA representative shared with someone on another area, in the years that have occurred recently, the water has creeped closer and closer to the house, to where my yard, entire yard is flooded, the house next door to me yards flooded. And I live in 1806, so I'm the first actual single-family residential home at the end of Main Street before you run into, where there is Slick Pig and Serpita, you know, all those places down there, those are all commercial. Their back area is flooded too. I don't know where the water's coming from. Obviously, yes, we know our weather has changed over the years in Tennessee. We don't hardly have winter anymore. But in April, and I called Police Department and let them know, and I've talked to somebody at the planning, and I don't know if anyone's here that I spoke to, the water came up on the back of the brick of my house 10 inches. It flooded over Apollo into, to where people were turning around and going back to Main Street, not passing over Apollo. And the people, the richer people who live in the 1700s and the 1600s blocks, their front yards were flooded higher than I have ever seen in the 50 years that I have been in Murfreesboro. So I want you all to be aware that that flood zone at Oakland, that little area there where the runoff is, might continue to get deeper as time goes by. You need to stop and consider that. I don't know how this is going to back it up. It's not going to affect me, I don't think, because mine runs for blocks and blocks before it crosses over to campus school, university and campus school, and then runs over to Oakland. But that area is going to be impacted by this volume of water coming downstream that comes through my backyard. My foundation of my house is in danger right now. So I just wanted to pass that on. That is something you need to consider. The client, whether you believe in climate change or not, this is very different for me. Like I say, I've lived there 35 years. I'm used to the ditch being full of water, but 10 inches up the backside of my house is a tremendous volume of water coming down. Wherever it's coming from, whatever changed above me, farther up the creek, I don't know. I just wanted to share that with you. You all need to think about that. And thank you for the archaeology. Yes, there's archaeology there, and it should be at least surveyed before you all tear it all up.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Good job on public speaking, too.
Very good.
I'm Leslie Russell Yost. I reside at 415 North Spring Street in downtown Murfreesboro. I purchased my home in 2008, and we've been renovating it since then. We purchased it in fall of 2008. In early 2009, when it, when spring kicked in, we discovered that we have floods on Spring Street. Within 12 minutes, the street in front of my house would be filled up to the curb. Within 18 minutes, my yard up to my front steps would be covered. I started calling streets and sewers. Each one told me to call the other for nine months. I contacted Nancy Ammons with whichever news channel she's with, and had repeatedly reached out to the city and was just told, well, that's just part of living downtown. During the 2010 flood, that weekend, my front porch is about three and a half feet tall. I had water over my front porch. I was begging the city to shut down the streets, because when people were driving through, it's pushing water into my house, into my basement. I'm worried that my house is going to cave in. Finally, after numerous emails and screamings, a previous council member had reached out to me, and we got a patch fixed directly in front of my house. That sort of worked until about the last four months. Within the last four months, it started flooding again. I couldn't leave my house for a meeting last week when it was raining, because, again, my street was completely filled up. Water was above my first porch step. And the police did come out and looked at it and said that they couldn't shut down the streets. But again, downtown Murfreesboro, every time it rains, you drive through a foot of water in the middle of streets and intersections. It's just inadequate infrastructure for it, and where we're going to be building on top of a wetlands, that water's going to have to go somewhere, and I would like for it to not be in my basement. And I do have pictures from some of the 2008 and 2010 flooding, and from last week. But I would love for you all to at least consider what's going to happen with the infrastructure in the existing neighborhoods when we're adding this much more neighborhoods to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission. My name is Bill Jakes. I live at 224 North Manny Avenue, downtown Murfreesboro. I, too, wear quite a few different hats tonight up here to speak. I am the Realtor representing the sellers. I am a board member of Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors, and a board member of Main Street Incorporated. I'm a task force member of the 2035 Committee. The reason I feel that these are relevant to mention is that all of these three organizations are going to tell you that we need more housing downtown, we need higher-density housing downtown. And to Jim's great point, I would also add that, in my opinion, we build in the modern aesthetic. We don't build 20s bungalows only anymore. We don't build Victorian only anymore. We build the modern aesthetic. But that's with all due respect, because Jim is a professional. I feel like the development truly is going to be an asset to downtown. And I say that very heartfelt, and I've had to really go deep on this one. I've strained some friendships on this development, because this potential preservation of this land, you know, it would have been a great thing. But Oakland's Park has 30 acres, seven of which was donated by this particular family that's trying to sell this land. This was a stipulation for prior approval for development in the year 2002. In 1997, a wetland study was performed on this land. I have all of it, and they came to the conclusion that approximately two and a half acres of the original 18-acre parcel may be floodplain, based on the plant life, based on the soils, that they may be. And in conclusion, the family donated seven of those 18 acres to the city of Murfreesboro, formerly, in 2002, and this was a condition for the approval of the development of an office complex on this property. God, every bit of it, I'd be glad to share any of that with you. So this family, bless their heart, have gone through this already, and the economy tumbled, the hospital moved, they have to start all over. And quite frankly, the property's been for sale for 20-plus years and maybe further back. The original owner, the grandfather of the heirs that are trying to sell it, moved to Murfreesboro to be a psychologist for the VA Hospital, and he was an advocate, believe it or not, for affordable housing. A lot of the small houses along McKnight Boulevard were built by this doctor. And, you know, I was talking with the family today, and the granddaughter said he would be proud to see some affordable housing built on his land. It would be just perfect. I believe that there is some cooperation already thrown out there for the consideration of this wetland and Oakland's. I really deeply feel that if a greenway can be established along this creek, it'll create a buffer. I believe that these residents that could potentially live here could really enjoy, and Oakland's Park could benefit from those people. This is a downzoning. I mean, OGR going down to residential. I mean, if this didn't go through, somebody could turn around and build an office complex here just as easily. I think that covers most of what I wanted to say. I would be happy to offer any of this old information about the wetland study that was performed in 97. I have the letters from the Army Corps of Engineers that show that they gave their blessing for this to be developed. So, again, sorry to run over time, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Anybody else?
My wife offered you your three minutes. Is that possible?
No. Non-transferable, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Baugh.
Hi, I'm Steve Baughman. I live at 315 North Manny. I've lived there, bought the house in '84, so I've been there for a while. It was one of the first houses that was built in the Manny addition, first subdivision of Murfreesboro. And I've seen a lot of changes. I've been an advocate of Murfreesboro and downtown. Mr. Lamb knows that from the very beginnings that I've moved here and was looking for a place to buy. I'm for this project overall, but I feel almost identically the way Mr. Bailey feels, as far as how this project really needs to progress. Traffic, you know, how's it going to go in and out? I went and looked at the other general runs, and that was a gated community. You know, is this going to be the same type of thing? I can't really see a gate working there, but the other ones that they were just looking at, it looked nice from the street. But overall, I'm for the project. There's a lot of concerns that I agree with everybody. The flooding is a big problem, and we saw that with South Manny, and that was fairly mandated to take care of the stormwater runoff that was happening. The same thing, I think, is what is going to happen on North Manny. I was part of that study. How are we going to handle all that stormwater runoff? And we had to upgrade, upgrade, upgrade all our sewer systems to be able to handle that. So that's all I got to say. I'm for the project, but I think in this present form, it's got to be fine-tuned. That's a lot of, a lot of homes, a lot of people moving in and out at a particular time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Allen. I live downstream at 206 Peacock Avenue, and I just want to share the concerns about the flooding. This particular site with the Zone A and AE, it, I feel like it should be preserved for storage, flood storage and places like that, but I'm a strong proponent for property rights and development. Downstream through Sinking Creek, it's already an impaired stream. We're seeing a lot of erosion along the banks already, so that water is having a hard time making its way through our city without showing the ramifications with property owners and the stream degradation. So I don't know what the answer is. I feel like this soil is a Ruelan soil. It's a wet soil. It doesn't seem like a high-density development of this type should be on a soil classification of that type. These are areas I think we should protect in our city for, you know, floodway, for the natural cycle to happen, so that we don't have the flooding that we see through our community. So I don't know what the answer is, but I just think that as a community, we do need to value those green spaces and how they protect against the economic losses that we see when we see the flooding. This happens to be the anniversary of when the Cumberland crested for the flood, ironically. That was just at flood stage almost last week. I think it got up to 28 feet, 29 feet. So we're going to see the flooding. It's going to cause economic damage to our community. We have to consider that above development sometimes, too. So I just wanted to toss that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Justina Kostkowska, and I'm a professor at MTSU in the English Department, and I have lived in Murfreesboro for 21 years. And if you detect an accent, it's Polish, and I'm a professor here. I bought a house on Winfrey at 415, which is the Dudley end of the street, and I have lived there for 18 years. My neighbors- My neighbors go to fish in the creek and go to watch the deer there and turkey and all kinds of turtle species. The development will end the life of the current residents on the street as we know it because of the exit point from Dudley and also because, of course, of the traffic being channeled onto Winfrey the other way. It will add heavy traffic and clog the intersection of Highland and Clark, which already backs up down to the new police station at certain times of day. Adding more traffic in the area will negatively affect the speed of the police response from the new police station, which I think nobody's mentioned. The Singing Creek is home of hundreds of animal and plant species. Those include the Blue Water Speedway, which is classified as endangered in the state of Tennessee and several other contiguous states. 131 migratory bird species that have been documented there live on the creek and rely on that space to be clean. The wildlife that survives the development crowded into the buffer areas that were designated will be stressed and will start encroaching onto human spaces. Their wetland habitat will be destroyed, so they'll be moving other places. The creek is a source of clean water for the city. The narrow buffer that the plan of the property allows for now will do nothing to stave off the impact of 91 multi-level houses and their residents and the runoff from the 309 parking spaces. No, the runoff will not be contained. Even the best engineering measures do not work 100% of the time. The runoff from the development will inevitably end up in the creek. You can't protect the creek by only protecting one side of it. Another issue is the flooding danger, which people have noticed to the lower area of Highland, that paving over of 11 acres of wetland will cause. Oakland's and the surrounding natural area are the city's green lung. It's our central park. It's the largest green space in the city and the only wooded space for miles around. Instead of being destroyed and paved over, this area could be developed into a city park with boardwalks over the nature preserve for the whole city to enjoy for generations. When I mention this development to people, they respond, "It's time to move." This new development is driving people away already. It's the opposite of revitalizing the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kostkowska. Would anybody else like to come up? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the staff if they have any questions or comments before the Planning Commission.
We do. There were a lot of concerns raised, and so I'll, forgive me for sort of trying to go through and catch all of them. With regard to the wetlands in the area, we would rely upon the Corps of Engineers and possibly the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for information on wetlands. And I believe that Mr. Jakes says he has some of that information. Either way, Sam Huddleston, who's our city's environmental engineer, has indicated that the applicant would be required to mitigate any disturbed wetlands, set aside the stream buffer, and then meet all of the city's water quality and quantity requirements. So I did want to mention that. Mr. Bailey's concern with regard to the urban fabric, I think that's probably going to be an ongoing debate as downtown continues to evolve over time. And that's something that the Planning Commission will play a role in, as well as the city council and the citizens of Murfreesboro. So I look forward to continuing that discussion. I don't know that there's a clear answer at this point. We have to decide what kind of downtown we want to be, and this is a proposal that we have in front of us today. I do want to point out with regard to green space that the proposed PRD, because it would be under the control ultimately of the city council, could have much more green space than what would be required under the current OGR zoning. If this property were built out and developed as office space, it would have considerably less, or it could have considerably less, green space and open space than what is currently shown on the applicant's plan. Finally, with regard to drainage, Mr. Huddleston tells us that the Lidle Street project does include new drainage structures and facilities. I'm not part of the discussion on that, so I don't have all of the details of that, but I trust that he is knowledgeable of that and has passed that information along to us. With that, I'll be happy to answer anything else that you may have.
As part of this project, I don't know who can answer this, but there was, as part of the opening comments, there was some suggestion or talk about connecting the greenway or having a greenway as part of this project. I mean, is that a, has that discussion gone anywhere? And how would that look? And, or is that so far down the road, it's not a topic of discussion at this point in time?
No, the developer came to talk to us about this project. One of our concerns actually was the flood area and the balance of the property that would not be utilized. The Highland study actually showed a connection from Oakland's Park going to Clark Boulevard, across Clark. It actually ends up, if you're familiar with a Hastings bookstore, is located. There is actually a wetlands there. The people that have purchased that have approached the city and would like to naturally preserve that and put a park or walking trail. This actually will connect that link back for us. We have a willing sold across Clark, and the developer has agreed to donate the balance of the property that would not be used back to the city. As Dana Richardson taught me when I became the planning director, she said, "Mr. Whitaker, the first thing you got to have to build a road or any greenway is the property. This is the first step." Naturally, we'd have to secure financing somewhere down the road for that, but we first have to set aside and preserve the area for that greenway trail. And again, it is part of the Highland study. It is shown on there. Also, the Highland study, and I agree, totally agree with Donald's analogy that this probably won't be the end of this discussion. In the Highland area, we have what we call character areas in that study. The Highland study, it does show this is mixed use. I've been with the city for 29 years. This was actually slated for when the medical was prominent downtown, or in this Highland area, there was going to be a medical office building bid on here. It was approved. The economy took a dive, and that venture was not sought after. We felt this was a lower impact than what was already approved. As Donald has stated, this gives far more green space. It also affords us an opportunity to get the balance of the property and hopefully in the future, connect a greenway trail from Oakland's over to the Hastings. We also have some interest in that area on Memorial for redeveloping, for some more residential. Don't know if that'd come to fruition, but if it does, it's even going to play a more critical part into this greenway trail for people to have walkability to the downtown and connection. As far as the, Chairman, I hope I'm not going over my two, three minutes, but as far as the Highland study, we will struggle, I promise you, as we redevelop, as we see redevelopment starting to happen. To me, I think this is the first step in a positive growth development of the Highland area. When the hospital moved off, it had a very, very big economic impact in this area. We have seen it struggle, not just through the downturn in the economy. We've seen businesses and struggling go out. It's primed for redevelopment. And as we all know, rooftops bring the commercial downtown. And to have a more vibrant downtown, and this is actually what we've been looking for. Now, I can't say that this will please everybody with the architecture, but it will get more rooftops downtown. And I think this, these are the catalysts that will promote more business coming downtown, more restaurants. The downtown study and, or the Highland study and the bottom study were to give us some guidance instead of having a hodgepodge development without any structure. And this actually fits into the mixed-use development. And I've probably run over my three minutes, Chairman. But I hope I answered your question on the connection.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission? There are none, then we're ready for a motion.
I'm going to make a comment and put it in the form of a motion, I guess. When we look at the Highland Avenue study and the bottom study, and we talk to developers as far as, I'll use Starbucks for example, they say the reasons that they don't want to come to the downtown area when we try to incentivize them to come, the reason is, is just not enough headcount. When we look at the growth of the city in the next 25 years, we're looking at doubling the population, we're, we obviously have to look at density. And what we have traditionally known in Murfreesboro is large lots with homes on them, ranch-style homes. You know, I haven't grown up here and spent my whole life here, I think I'll miss it. I already do miss old Murfreesboro. But this is changing. When I ride through Nashville and I look at the Gulf area and how it's developing, I think that's probably the trend that we're going to see in downtown Murfreesboro in this area. When I look a couple blocks the other direction from this property, from the Oakland Mansion, I see Lee Street. And we've got mattresses laying in the road, we've got TVs laying in the ditch, we've got trash all over the place. And here we're talking about a development that will come in and have a homeowners association that will maintain the property and make sure that it's held up to a standard that, quite honestly, this neighborhood hasn't experienced. When you look at the police station and stuff coming across the street, that's not just, you know, something that was willy-nilly. It was by design to help bring security and stability to this area. So having said all that, I do think that the intentions are good. Time will prove whether or not we're right or not. But I do think that the development of the greenway system coming through there will definitely connect other neighborhoods to Oakland Mansion. So there will definitely be benefits as time goes on, and I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed. We have two abstentions, Mr. Wade and myself. Motion carries. Going to the next public hearing, it's item E on the agenda, annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 12.24 acres located along Halls Hill Pike, Old South Properties is the applicant. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have received a petition for annexation of an 8.85 acre parcel located along the north side of Halls Hill Pike. This is east of North Rutherford Boulevard and west of the Providence Point subdivision and Journey Drive. The property adjoins the city on the north and the east sides, and it does lie within the city's urban growth boundary. Our study area includes a 2,100 linear foot portion of Halls Hill Pike. This stretches from Woods Edge Drive, which is east of our study area, all the way to about 100 feet to the west of our study area. There would be two of our famous 10-foot strips left at either end to keep us from encircling unincorporated property in the county. Staff has reviewed this. We have completed a plan of services. We received responses from all of our city departments and other agencies. And the plan of services shows that water, sewer, electric, and all other essential utilities and services can be provided to this property. There is an accompanying rezoning request that will come as the next item on the agenda. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Does the applicant have anything? Okay. Then I'll open the public hearing, asking if anybody'd come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? In that case, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Lamb, if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. To accompany that, then we'll go now with the zoning application for approximately 8.9 acres located along Halls Hill Pike to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Heritage Place PRD is the name of it. Old South Properties is the applicant. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. The applicant is Old South Properties, represented by Rob Mulchan and Matt Taylor from SEC. This property is currently zoned RM, which is medium-density residential in the county. The applicant is seeking PRD, or Planned Residential District zoning for the property, with the intent of constructing 129 townhouses divided among 24 buildings. The gross density would be 14.39 dwelling units per acre. These units would consist of vinyl exteriors and surface parking. The adjacent zoning for this property, there's RS15 on the north, RS10 on the northeast, RM16 on the southeast. And then the properties to the, excuse me, property to the west is a zoned RM in the county. It's a terrible thing when you can't rely on your own notes because they're giving you false information. Murfreesboro 2035, not yet adopted, but it does show this area as appropriate for multifamily development, and the land use aspect of this request appears to be consistent with Murfreesboro 2035. Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for the city council. Matt Taylor from SEC is going to talk more about the project, and staff can answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Floyd of Old South Properties. We do have a brief presentation to introduce you to Heritage Place prior to the public hearing being opened. First is to orient you to the site. Mr. Anthony did a good job at that. We are located on the north side of Halls Hill Pike, approximately nine acres in size, just to the east of the intersection with Rutherford Boulevard. Currently, the property is mainly open pasture land with some trees around the perimeter on the east and north sides. Here's looking directly back onto the property from Halls Hill, onto the property from the southeast corner, and then back toward the west along Halls Hill. You can see one of our neighbors across the street on the left side of this picture. Plan itself is requesting a PRD zoning for 129 townhomes on just under nine acres. Comes out to about 14 and a half units per acre. All of our utilities for the development will be underground. All of these townhomes will be for sale. They'll be platted through a horizontal property regime. Each individual owner will have to be a member of a mandatory HOA. That HOA will be managed by a third-party association who will maintain all the landscaping, the parking lot, the exterior of the homes, any amenities and stormwater areas, basically anything except for the interior of the units, which will be the responsibility of the individual owners themselves. We have planned for two stormwater areas. One of those is along Halls Hill Pike, and the other's about midway back through the property at a secondary low point. We feel this is a, will be a very walkable community. We've provided sidewalks throughout, all the way from the back unit all the way to Halls Hill Pike will be connected as well as into the amenity area located in the central part of the development. We have proposed landscape buffers along the entire northern and western boundaries. We've also provided landscape buffers along approximately two-thirds of the eastern boundary until we start to adjoin the Grove Apartment Complex, where we go back to a more normal perimeter planting of trees, since that's more similar zoning there. where we go back to a more normal perimeter planting of trees, since that's more similar zoning there. We have proposed for our solid waste to be managed through a compactor. That compactor is located close to the entrance but behind the first set of units. That will be further screened through masonry walls and landscaping. Townhomes themselves will all be two stories. They'll all have a patio with rear storage as well as a covered front porch, ranging in size from just under 1,100 square feet to almost 1,200 square feet in size. And here's an architectural drawing of what the building will look like and where the materials will be used. You can see the varying roof lines, the variation of materials, the different pitches over the porches themselves. The units will be two stories, and the top of the peak will be just under 29 feet tall. Here is a picture of Willowbrook, which is the same product that Old South has built very close to this location. You can see they use different color materials, materials in different locations, articulation on the front to create some variation, as well as landscaping along the base of these buildings. Amenities, we've tried to locate the amenities central to the neighborhood to promote activity and ease of walkability to that facility. It will consist of some open space for any play or just general recreation, relaxation, as well as a structured pavilion. In this same area, we have, we seek to preserve a natural grove of trees that's there today. How much of that we can preserve will be determined on the final stormwater design when we do construction plans. In addition, we provided for a nice entryway through a masonry sign at our entrance on the Halls Hill Pike that will be accented by landscaping around the sign as well as continuously along our road frontage along Halls Hill Pike. Access, we've got one access proposed onto Halls Hill Pike just because of the narrow nature of the property as it stands today. That's all the access points we can have on Halls Hill Pike. However, we have proposed a future stub to the west so that whenever that property develops, we will have an additional connection point back out to Rutherford or Halls Hill Pike, however that property develops. We did have a neighborhood meeting approximately a month, six weeks ago with our neighbors. We sent out about 40 letters. We had about four residents show up, four of our neighbors. We made several concessions or accommodations for them following that meeting. The first one of those is, we moved our entrance onto Halls Hill Pike toward the west so that the headlights at night would not shine into their living room. We also moved the compactor from being closer to the road to being back off the road. And then our neighbor to the west operates a small farming operation there. Comes in, cuts hay, I think he has some cattle. And right now, he's utilizing a driveway that is on our side of the property. And he asked if we would install driveway culvert so he could still access that property with his farm equipment. We agreed to do that. So, myself or Mr. Floyd will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing opens.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Floyd?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Nobody? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Questions and comments from members of the Planning Commission?
Chairman, if there's no comments, I'll make a motion to approve, except if there are comments.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item G is a zoning application for approximately 22.5 acres located along New Salem Highway to be rezoned from RM-16 and PRD, known as the Bell Tower Apartments PRD. Castle Construction Company is the applicant. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, Castle Construction Company, is represented by Rob Mulchan and Matt Taylor from SEC. They do wish to rezone 22 and a half acres, 22 and a half acres currently located along the north side of New Salem Highway to PRD, or Planned Residential District. The property is currently zoned RM-16. This is a portion of the Myrtle Bell property, which was master-planned back in 2015. The proposed PRD would include a 384-unit multifamily apartment complex spread across seven buildings, each being four stories in height. That's part of the reason why the applicant is seeking PRD, to allow the four stories. The RM-16 only allows three stories. This would be a gross density of 17 units per acre. Adjacent zoning includes RZ on the northwest, RM-16 on the north, northeast and west, CH on the west, RS-15 on the south, and PUD on the southwest. The plan does include a new roadway that would connect to New Salem Highway. It would serve this apartment complex, and it would eventually extend east and provide cross-access and greater internal circulation for this entire Myrtle Bell property. Murfreesboro 2035 shows the area as appropriate for multifamily residential, and this request certainly appears to be consistent with that. I have passed around a piece of correspondence that we received late this afternoon from neighbors who are opposed particularly to the height of these structures. The Planning Commission needs to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. And Matt Taylor from SEC is gonna speak more about the project. Staff can answer any questions.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb. Again, my name is Matt Taylor. I am accompanied by Mr. Roy McLean of Castle Construction, and Mr. Tony Hatta, the architect, Ms. Brenda Nieders, the owner, and Mr. John Harney of the Parks Group tonight. We hope we've got you covered on all bases for any questions. We're here tonight to present to you the Bell Tower Apartments, which is a part of the Myrtle Bell Farm Master Plan, as Mr. Anthony mentioned, was approved several years ago. The property is located on the north side of New Salem Highway. Currently, it's mostly open farmland with a few structures located closer to New Salem Highway. The property to the north and east of this proposed project includes the remainder of the Myrtle Bell Farm Master Plan. To the west is the Westbury Farms Apartment Complex. And then to the south is New Salem Highway. Property is already zoned RM-16 to allow the multifamily use. We have merely made this request to allow the fourth story. We'd like to offer a different product in the market and bring elevators to the project. Here's a picture of some of the existing structures that are closer to Highway 99. This is looking east along Highway 99, and then looking back into the property itself. Plan itself, as I mentioned, is requested to be a PRD zoning. I say that, but we've also respected the master plan that was approved in 2015. We've not moved the roads or the connection points onto New Salem Highway. I say that as well, that even though it's a part of that master plan, this project does not propose to make any connections to neighboring projects or properties or stub streets at this time. That is anticipated to happen in the future, but not with this project. Those are completely separate items. As Mr. Anthony said, we are proposing 384 apartments on 22 and a half acres for a density of just over 17 units to the acre, which is well within the allowed density, with all the density bonuses we would get for our amenities here. We feel like this particular plan provides for a strong streetscape. We have oriented the buildings to respect the street and encapsulate the parking on the internal side of the site and create a village-type atmosphere as you would drive down this public street in the future. We have provided an abundance of parking through a mixture of surface as well as garage spaces. Those garage spaces will be able to be leased by our residents here for their use. The project will have on-site management. That will be inside the clubhouse on a daily basis to take care of the residents' needs and other management needs on the property. We feel like that once you enter the project along the second entrance, it'll continue the streetscape through the main street ambiance and the boulevard entryway between the buildings. We feel like we provided a very walkable community with sidewalks all the way around all of our buildings, as well as the site itself encapsulated by a walking trail. This project will offer a concierge trash service where somebody comes to the actual unit and takes that trash to the compactor rather than the resident have to go to the compactor. It's a very attractive feature in some of our newer developments in town, and works extremely well. We've located the clubhouse in the central part of our development so as to make it an activity hub. It's very pedestrian-friendly. You can walk there easily. We want our residents there on a very regular basis to create an ambiance and an atmosphere. Buildings themselves will all be four stories with the exception of the amenity center, which will be one story. We have a mixture of one, two, and three unit, our bedroom units, that range in size from 850 square feet to over 1,400 square feet. And all the four-story buildings will have elevators included in them. Here's some examples of a one-bedroom unit layout, as well as a two-bedroom, and finally, a three-bedroom. All of our materials for these buildings will be high-quality materials, brick, stone, cement board siding. Roofing materials will range from standing seam metal as well as architectural shingles. Here's an example of the front elevation for building type one, which is your straight buildings. You can see a very defined entryway, a good mixture of materials, as well as a varying roof line. Creates a lot of interest. And then the same elevation for building type two, which is the L-shaped building that you'll see on the concept plans. And the same sort of features are included on both buildings to be consistent throughout. Even the garages that we have around the site, we utilize multiple materials on the facades themselves as well as interest in the roof lines. Amenities, we feel like these will start with our entrance signs. We've planned one as you come off of Highway 99, as well as the first two entrances into the development. It will be a low-key, yet prominent signage, as you can see here, and well landscaped. The main amenity complex here will be focused around this clubhouse to create a lot of activity and energy in this central part of our neighborhood. This will include, here's an example elevation. You can see it pulls a lot of the same architectural character from the other buildings, except for put on the one story. Has the same materials. We have a large pool to the rear of the clubhouse, surrounded by gathering areas, seating, fire pit area, as well as a playground in this area and a volleyball court. On the eastern portion of the property, we've also planned for a full dog park to be planned in this area as well. And here's an exhibit showing all the sidewalks, as well as the walking trail. See, it's quite an extensive pedestrian network that we'll be constructing, as well as sidewalks along our public streets. Access, as I mentioned earlier, we are respecting the master plan. The access points onto New Salem Highway will remain the same. But again, this does not connect to, this project does not connect to Murchon or any of the other stub streets, or create any new stubs to adjoining properties. The property itself, this project will construct one new public road off of New Salem Highway, shown here in red. And then the project entrances themselves, all three of these are proposed to be gated entryways to create a sense of privacy and exclusivity for our residents. Myself or any other member of the team will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, Matt. Okay, I'll open the public hearing for this matter and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning, of the Planning Commission. My name is Tamara Paxton. I live in the Salem Cove Crossing subdivision at 3328 Berry Side Drive. We appreciate your service to the residents of the Murfreesboro area, and we're grateful for this opportunity to speak to you today. My neighbors and I, please raise your hands. My neighbors and I are here to represent our community, which is adjacent to the proposed Bell Tower Apartments. We come to you to express our concerns for the proposed rezoning change of the approximately 22 and a half acres located along New Salem Highway, west of Casey Lane and east of St. Andrews Drive, known as the Myrtle Bell Property. This is the third time that residents from our community have addressed the Planning Commission since the proposed development of this area. We have two main concerns. Our first concern is the number and size of the Bell Tower Apartments proposed by the Castle Construction Company. We are opposed to the construction of four-story apartment buildings, as stated on page 15 of the program book. While we appreciate a planned community and the PRD rezon requests, we are concerned about buildings that are potentially 52 feet tall, especially since no other buildings bordering New Salem Highway are as tall. A good example of what this complex would look like is the hotel area at the avenue where two apartment buildings are currently under construction. One five stories and the other four stories. These buildings can be seen from areas as far away as Stone's River National Battlefield. To place a development like this in this area where no other buildings are taller than three stories, for example, Westbury Farms Apartments adjacent to this proposed complex, would be setting a precedent that we're not sure the commission would want to do. Also, I would like to point out that the most recent building built in this area is the St. Thomas Health Building, which is only two stories tall, and the current constructions of two additional apartment complexes behind CVS on Casey Lane at New Salem Highway, which are only two and three stories tall. With so many apartments in a small area, we feel this would have a negative impact, both aesthetically and in producing more traffic and congestion. As stated in the August 30, 2016 article by Sam Stockard in the Murfreesboro Post, Mayor McFarland stated that from State Route 99 interchange to Veterans Parkway and the St. Andrews Drive area, the city has 5,000 apartments built or ongoing construction. Mayor McFarland stated, and I quote, "I would agree that's too much." In addition, Mayor McFarland stated in the article that putting such a large number of units into one area causes heavy traffic and hinders the city's ability to provide services, including the burden to our public schools. Our second concern is the traffic flow through the apartment complex onto Murchon Drive and through our subdivision. I understand Mr. Taylor addressed this, but we'd like to reiterate this concern. The builder of our subdivision, Mr. Wayne Belt, told each resident that Murchon Drive would contain an emergency gate that would only be used by emergency personnel and vehicles. At our first meeting with the Planning Commission on February 15, 2014, the former Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Joseph Adalot, agreed with our request to not have Murchon Drive become a connection between New Salem Highway and St. Andrews. He expressed to the Planning Commission that he saw no need for this connection and for traffic to be routed through our subdivision.
Ms. Paxton, you need to wrap it up.
I'm wrapping up, yes, sir. So, we continue to request that Murchon Drive not be used as a connection between New Salem Highway and St. Andrews. Okay. Members of the Planning Commission and Chairman, we ask as residents who love Murfreesboro and love our community to please take seriously these requests. We ask that you take time to reflect and make wise choices for the future of the communities in the western part of Rutherford County. Your choices today will impact our quality of life, our safety, and our families here in Murfreesboro. Thank you again for your time and for your service to our community.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
My name is Chris Davis, and I live at 3336 Berry Side Drive in the Salem Cove community. And I just have, nothing was addressed on the Highway 99 traffic congestion situation as far as this project goes. And I have learned that the Impact Project, which is the Highway 99 expansion, was just approved by our state legislature this month. So, it is not even on the Planning Commission yet. They say that maybe in 2018 it will start. And the first half will only be from Old Fort Parkway to Interstate I-20. be from Old Fort Parkway to Interstate I twenty-four. My question to Mr. Taylor is, the way that it looks on page twenty-six of the program book, that the first unit of that is sitting closer to Highway ninety-nine than the clubhouse and the, one of the apartment units on Westbury Farm that sits further back. Once the road is expanded to the five-lane highway, and if this is approved to be a four-story building, will that building sit directly on New Salem Highway to where nothing around it is comparable to the height of it and be there in that? I guess I want to know what the frontage would be on this apartment complex if approved after the highway is expanded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I'm Sherry Roberts. I'm at three-three-one-five Mersham Drive. And I'm here to say that I already back up to Westbury Apartments. That side of Mersham, all our backyards look at a three-story building behind us. So we already have the third floor staring at us. So you're going to put an apartment complex higher than that to stare at us even more is a concern for me, because three stories is really high. It's higher than you think. We do have a tree line, which is dying, and nothing's being done about that. We still hear the noise from the apartments on a three-story. So how much noise are we going to hear when the fourth story is higher than the three-story in front of it, when we live on Mersham? Because that's a number of houses that are there. We've passed around pictures so that you can see our neighborhood. Right now, I have a screened-in patio, but I don't, in the evenings, sit in it because the apartments right there are staring at me, because that's their living room. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Close the public hearing. Let's see, either Mr. Taylor or somebody on the staff, I believe Ms. Davis is questioning about the proximity of building number one to ninety-nine when it's finally expanded, whenever that might be.
Yes, sir. I think we're all looking forward to that day. And I think her timing's right. I've heard that utilities should start later this year or next year. And the building will be at least forty feet away from the future right-of-way of New Salem Highway. I believe that our plans already reflect any additional right-of-way that would need to be taken or has already been taken or purchased for that widening project. And in addition, I think there was a question about what traffic impacts. Without knowing the exact timing of Highway ninety-nine, we've completed a traffic study at the request of staff. We anticipate at least constructing left and right turn lanes into the site, as well as a possible signal. The signal and all those improvements would be subject to TDOT's approval, as well as city engineering approval, though.
Anybody on the Planning Commission have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, can I, just very quickly, Mr. Hubbleston, who is here in spirit, if not in body, has told us that the Old Fort to Veterans project on Highway ninety-nine should begin in two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen, and it is a twenty-four-month project.
And I would add, in respect to the buildings, our closest building is about two hundred and seventy-five feet from the corner of our building to the back corner of the closest lot within Salem Cove Crossing. So almost a football field away.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one has any comments? I presume we're ready for a motion of some type.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Item H is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately one point nine-four acres located along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive. Chris Bratcher is applicant. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you, sir. We have received a petition from Chris Bratcher for annexation of a one-point-three-six acre lot located at the northwest corner of Florence Road and Alexandria Drive. This is west of Northwest Broad Street and the CSX railroad track, and it is adjacent to the Florence Fields subdivision on the north and west sides. The property adjoins the city on the south and east, and it does lie within the city's urban growth boundary. Our study area includes four hundred and linear, four hundred and thirty linear feet of Alexandria Drive from the northwestern corner of the subject property all the way down to the existing city limits. We don't need a ten-foot strip on this one. Staff has completed a plan of services, and based on the responses that we received from city departments and other agencies, water, electric, and other essential services can be provided to the property. Murphysboro Water and Sewer has indicated that the applicant does have a couple of options for handling sewage on the site, either by extending the sewer system across Florence Road to the site, or installing some sort of alternative system. The applicant will need to work with Murphysboro Water and Sewer if the property is annexed and developed, on determining which system will work best. But either way, Murphysboro Water and Sewer has determined that the site can be served. There is an accompanying rezoning request, which is the next item on the agenda. Planning Commission needs to conduct a public hearing and formulate a recommendation to the city council. Staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this first public hearing is pertaining to the annexation and plan of services only, not the zoning. So I'll open the public hearing this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
I'll go ahead, because I'm here for both H and I. Mike Radomski, I live at one-oh-three Sky Harbor Drive. Got to say that there's been a lot of talk tonight about Murphysboro revitalizing and all that. That's well and good, but I know for a fact that myself and the rest of my neighbors, we live in our neighborhood because we don't want businesses like this right in our front yard. So I would ask that you deny this claim. Thank you.
Jeff Rock, seventy-one-oh-two Polk Drive, right there. I'm also against the annexation. Also, not a very good public speaker, by the way. And it's true, that's why we moved there. I mean, I've been there for going on almost twenty years now, and we wanted a residential community that would literally be right in my front yard. And I just want to state that it's in my front yard. I don't know where you guys live. I'm sure you all probably have homes of your own, but, you know, with children in the same neighborhood and, you know, the traffic and the encroachment of the city, which we're concerned would engulf us eventually, we would like to remain a residential neighborhood, and that's why I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're talking about the annexation only at this time.
Shane Patterson, seventy-eleven Alexandria Drive. I've lived there approximately twenty years. Again, we moved to the county twenty years ago to have more of the country feel. We do not care to see the city move in. I called the city numerous times when y'all moved the mulch plant in. Obviously, it got put in. And we have dealt with the noise from that, running the mulch plant on Sundays while we're out trying to have picnic or whatever in the backyard. I request that this annex be denied at this time for purposes of we'd like to remain in the county and not have what could possibly move in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
My name is Sean Davis. I live at seventy-one-oh-five Polk Drive, which is immediately adjacent to the property in question here. And I would just like to echo the sentiments of all my neighbors, and I'd have a lot more to say after the annexation vote, if the proposal comes along. It doesn't seem like a well-thought-out idea, but I echo all their sentiments, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. I'm Kathleen Young, and I'm at seven-one-twenty-eight Alexandria. I like the idea. I think it's a good idea. But I'm farther down the street than these folks. They're right there by what could happen, so I just want to say I'm all for it. I think we need something in that area. We have nothing. We were excited when we had a subway across the street, so there's nothing but car lots, and I think this is a good idea to have something in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Kristy Baum. I live at two-three-zero Sky Harbor Drive, and I agree with the people who first spoke. We moved here from Pennsylvania about six years ago. We desperately searched for a place where our kids could ride their bikes around the neighborhood, not worry about developments and stores and all the traffic that comes along with it, but still be close enough to different stores that it's not an inconvenience to get to. So I am against the annexation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission members and staff. I'm Chris Bratcher. I am the owner of the property, and I do request for annexation.
Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing. Questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I think from an annexation standpoint, this is adjoining our city property, and if the property owner wants to be annexed, I would agree that we should allow him to be annexed into the city, and so I would make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Now we're ready for the zoning part of it. The zoning application for approximately one-point-three-six acres located along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive to be zoned commercial fringe simultaneous with annexation. Chris Bratcher is applicant. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the property that was previously considered for annexation. Chris Bratcher, the applicant, is requesting that the city zone the property CF for commercial fringe. It's presently zoned RM multifamily residential in the county. Just a couple of things I do want to point out, that CF, commercial fringe, is a little bit less intensive zoning than highway commercial. It's sort of our mid-grade, commercial-type zoning. It would allow for things such as retail shops, gas stations, most types of restaurants. It would not allow for vehicle dealerships, kennels, any of the louder, more intensive-type commercial uses. The zoning districts that are lying adjacent to the subject property include CH, LI, and HI on the south, CH on the east, and the adjacent properties to the north and the west lie within the unincorporated county and are zoned RM. Murphysboro twenty-thirty-five is quite ambiguous on this particular parcel. It shows a continuation of land uses all around this particular parcel, and on this parcel, it shows undeveloped. So we're not quite sure what that means for the long-term future of this parcel. Public, excuse me, the Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. And I don't know if Mr. Bratcher wants to say anything in support of the rezoning. Okay.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward pertaining to the zoning.
Mike Radomski, one-oh-three Sky Harbor Drive. I'll just echo again what I said on the previous one, but I will also add that with the recent addition to the train tracks that they've done, they've got basically a mini train yard there, traffic is already a nightmare. The road is blocked by the train numerous times a day. Adding a business in a residential area makes no sense. Their proposed driveway for the business would put it right in the intersection between two front yards in the neighborhood. Traffic just, it would be unacceptable. So I'd please, again, ask you to deny.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Again, Shane Patterson, seven-zero-one-one Alexandria. Mr. Chairman, Commission, thank you for this time. The community had a meeting the other night that Mr. Bratcher held, and he explained to us that they're wanting a Dollar General at this location. So if y'all approve this zoning change, there's going to be a Dollar General more likely move in there. That is not what we want. As I said before, we have dealt with many things in the last seven years or so. We feel that we're being encroached on and that we're being pushed out of our house. CSX, first of all, y'all came in with the mulch plant, then CSX added their extra rail, which backed up the roads by more train traffic and the stopping of the train, and then we dealt with the Singer Road being closed. So many, many days, months, we had to go around the Old Nashville Highway just to get to work or to get out of the neighborhood because of this. I ask you not to approve the zoning, because we do know what's going in, and as neighbors do not want this. We've dealt with many different things. The county's fixing to come in with the maintenance shop just across from y'all at the city. I mean, this area, again, we moved into it because it was more country-like. It was not so congested. And I understand there's going to be progress, I do, but at some point, you have to give the residents a little of what they want, and if you could help us with that, I'd greatly appreciate it, because we do feel like we're being pushed out of our homes at this time. And when they come back, if y'all approve this, they're going to tell you that Dollar General, it's low-density traffic, it's only one to two cars every two to three minutes, two hundred cars a day. Well, that's two hundred more cars than we've got, which our neighborhood from Old Nashville Highway down Polk and out Alexandria is already a cut-through for a lot of the traffic on Florence Road, so we're having to deal with that. And I just, with the kids and everyone else in the neighborhood, we really wish you would not approve this zoning. There is three Dollar Generals within a five-mile radius of our homes. There's one at Manson Pike, there's one at the Old Highway in Smyrna, and there's one on Sulfur Springs. If we need a Dollar General, we can get there within five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anybody else?
My name is Pam Warner, and I reside at seventy-two-oh-two Alexandria Drive. I oppose this simply because I can't even get out of my driveway or my street to go to work every day. Traffic backs up from the railroad tracks and all the developments that have gone on through Florence Road. The only access to Murphysboro Road is there at that intersection and Singer Road. There are two roads that cross the railroad tracks between Nissan Boulevard and Thompson Lane. These are the only two entrances in and out of this property. I am opposed to this. I think it's going to cause several complications. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lori Hannington. My husband and I reside at sixty-two-forty-five Cedridge, which is just down the road from Alexandria. And unless you actually live there, you can't imagine. I leave for work at six a.m., and there's already congestion with people trying to get out. The train stopped, and you literally can throw a penny and get to a dollar store in any way, shape, or form. Sulfur Springs, Thompson Lane, when you're Manson Pike. It's really illogical. I don't even know why they would want to move in there. It's, and quite honestly, I won't shop there anymore because it is just ridiculous. So they will lose my business because it is just illogical for them to even want to come in there. Unless you live there, you cannot imagine what early hours or late hours, the traffic is horrible. And as a community and a neighborhood, you're going to get, like we were talking, you And as a community and a neighborhood, you're going to get, like we were talking, you know, everybody has a right, and I'm not against progress, but there's a place and a time, and that certainly isn't it. And it's just, it's just unimaginable that they would even want to move there. There's a railroad track and a residential area, and that's it. There is no other way to reroute it. There is nowhere else to go insofar as entering and exiting. So, I hope that, you know, we've heard a lot of people in different places, and I hope that our voice will be heard this evening because I think a lesser group of people, and a lot of people have been there a long time, will be uprooted and look elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sean Davis, 7105 Polk Drive. Again, I am adjacent to the property. You stated that it was ambiguous what the zoning of the property was. For anybody in the neighborhood, it's not ambiguous. It is a lot within our subdivision. And besides echoing everything else that my neighbors have said, I believe it's unethical and irresponsible to change a lot within our subdivision into any sort of commercial property, and that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Tim Fox. I live at 7437 Polk Drive, kind of the other end from this, the entrance that goes out on Washington there. I'm opposed to this as well, as all my neighbors have said. With this request, it's going to create not only the traffic issues that everybody's talked about, the train system there, it's always backed up, they're always blocking the road. Just on my way here this afternoon or this evening, I had to wait for 10 minutes just sitting there, ended up turning around, going around by the Singer Road to get down here. In addition, the, you know, the theft when you move in commercial there, my road, Polk, runs right at the proposed entrance to this Dollar General. I don't have anything against Dollar General or any kind of commercial, but like they said, it was a residential lot there in our subdivision. And as everybody's said, the, you know, it opens up those opportunities for the theft, the trash in the neighborhood. Any given morning, I can go out there and have to pick up five or six beer cans, Coke cans, whatever. I think that just adding this extra flow into the subdivision will just create more of a nightmare for all of us. So, I do request that you oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Anybody else?
My name is Kim Leyborn. I recently bought my house, 7001 Alexandria, and I have lived in the city my whole life. I've grown up in Southern California, Denver, Colorado. I've lived in Virginia Beach, and anywhere that I go in the city, there's always going to be that corner store. We have that with the Florence Market, the gas station, and that is on the other side of the railroad tracks. So, yes, I can see that putting a business on the side where all the traffic builds up could be beneficial for that business, but at the same time, it also brings in theft. It will lower the value of our properties, and it will bring in the risk of burglaries, violence, and I do not think that that would be beneficial for anybody. And with it being on this side of the railroad tracks, I do think that there is plenty of other opportunities for them to build that business on Northwest Broad Street rather than in a residential area. I forgot what I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else?
Again, Kathleen Young, 7128 Alexandria. I think I'm in the minority here with the neighbors, but I see their point. I mean, again, they're right there by it, and it's going to be a lot of noise, and, but you know, I think if he develops it to where there is a buffer, you know, where there'd be walls, or not a wall, but fences or trees, whatnot, I think, you know, so it wouldn't be such an eyesore within the neighborhood. But I think there are a lot of benefits, and I'm sure a lot of people who live there would shop there, and I don't want to speak for them, but I don't want to drive five, six, seven miles to go to Dollar General or whatever, how many miles it is. I'd like it right there, just my opinion. But again, I'm farther down, so it doesn't affect me as much as these folks. But I'm, again, I'm all for it. We have nothing in that neighborhood as far as groceries. We have the gas station that's overpriced, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Again, Jeff Ruck, 7102 Polk Drive. When I drive home from work, I pass a lot of stores, by the way, so I don't think that would really be an issue. I moved here approximately 20 years ago. I'm from New York originally. I've tried to get away from commercial zoning. It's really difficult in New York. I don't know if you've ever been there, or ever lived there, maybe you've been here your whole lives. I'm not really sure about all that. But the only saving grace of the constant noise and unfortunate mulch stink, you know, is that that area is currently blocked. There's nothing there. There's some trees. We don't necessarily have to see the train, and we definitely hear it. You know, there's a bunch of tracks there now, and on most quiet evenings, when the train isn't making any noise, I can hear them pushing buttons at the gas station, and I can't even see the gas station. I just wanted to make a point that for those with children, increased traffic brings more strangers into our neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, a lot of kids there. So, that's a reason for caution. The inevitable increase in litter due to any kind of commercial business is sure to follow, and as we pointed out, we already got plenty of that as it is. I pick up a lot of redneck beer cans in my yard from time to time. That's kind of a problem when you want to mow, but it's not favorable to residents. Businesses such as Dollar Stores don't attract the most thoughtful of customers always, which leads me to the litter again, and possibly, you know, it's the strangers, you know, around the children, and the bright lights in the evening, and the unnecessary traffic, the traffic. We keep bringing up the traffic. That train can sit there for 30 minutes. I don't know why anybody would want to put a business there to begin with. 30 minutes it can sit there. Only one other way out. God help you if there's an accident on the other side. None of us want this, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Any kind of commercial activity would be literally right there. Anybody pulling in and out will just about be blocking my driveway. I just hope that you put a little thought into the residents of Murphysboro, who so much wanted to be just in a neighborhood. I'm not opposed to businesses. I'm a capitalist myself, but there's places for that, and I don't believe it's near us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, Kristy Bond, 230 Sky Harbor Drive. A lot of my concerns are the same with many of my neighbors here. The congested traffic is ridiculous, especially with the trains coming by. You'll have one stopped on the train tracks while another one's going slow, and as soon as that one is done, here comes another one, and you're still stuck there sitting. There's not really a good outlet for any business to get out of that area, that parcel there. Not only that, like, the increased traffic, I have six children, the youngest being three. He loves to run, he loves to climb trees, he loves to do all that stuff little three-year-old boys do. We like to walk around our little circle, which would include that corner of Alexandria and Polk Drive. I would not feel comfortable doing that with the increased traffic, especially if there's semi-trucks coming to deliver goods, if they're coming up Polk Avenue or Polk Drive. Are they going to have to widen that road, or what's it going to have to do to get those goods in there? I can't really see a semi-truck coming in from Broad Street across railroad tracks and then making that sharp turn to go into, you know, the back of the store, wherever to unload, to unload their goods. Again, we like to walk with, you know, my babies in the strollers and the kids riding the bikes, and I really do think it would make our community less attractive. I don't know if it would decrease home value. I couldn't imagine that it would increase them. And I'm not against development, I'm not against the stores. We enjoy walking up to the little gas station and getting snacks and things, but I do feel that it would better serve the community on the other side of the railroad tracks. It would keep the traffic clear. It wouldn't add any congestion that's already there because of the train traffic. And I just hope that you take into consideration the majority of the neighbors in this area. This would be the only commercial place. I mean, we moved there because we didn't want that kind of stuff there, or we would have moved to the city. I would be in Nashville if I didn't mind fighting the traffic, and I wanted a store on every corner. So, I really hope you listen to the majority of the voices here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning.
Really?
I'm Amanda Davis. I'm at 7105 Polk Drive. I don't want to mimic what everyone's saying because I feel the same. I want to give you a different perspective, and I think as a young mother with a special needs child, if I didn't stand up and say something, I wouldn't be advocating as the mother that I am. So, I'm going to give you a situation that happened at our house that definitely put my son, who is non-verbal, in danger. So, we have no trespassing signs and stuff. My husband and I bought our house, it was our first home after we got married, didn't have money to put a fence in yet. Saving up, it'll happen within time. My son has a neurological disorder where he can, he understands what's going on, but he cannot verbalize it. When the train comes, he has an auditory issue. So, when the train comes, he's starting to get used to it, but he covers his ears and stuff, and it's been a working progress. Long story short, someone crossed and cut and through our yard. My son was playing, and I was around. This young man was in his early twenties, and I was also in my twenties, but however very larger than me. Could have done nothing, meant to do anything. However, he would not leave my property, and my son was standing right there and had no way of telling me. So, if this happens, right, and we're bringing more people in and stuff, yes, I guess that means I'm going to have to put a fence in. I'm going to have to teach my special needs son that sometimes you're not allowed to play in the yard because it's too loud while they're building, or the train's coming, or both. So, I guess what it means to me is, yes, I'm all for businesses. I came from a family of businesses. I get it. However, it's impacting personally, at least for our family, so much to where I'm considering on moving for my own son's sake because I have to, he's not going to be able to come home and relax. He can't play in his yard when he wants to because of something being built, or the train passing, or both. So, I guess I just, I, maybe you can relate. I'm sure your mothers and fathers and aunts and uncles and maybe who can kind of relate when you see a kid in your family who you do the best that you can, and you can't control what happens to them, whether in their life and everything else, and he's four. I don't want to explain to my son, he's four, why he can't go play out in the yard. I'm all for businesses, but the fact that it is literally in our subdivision, literally facing our property where my kids play, I guess that's just, I wanted to give you a different perspective on it, on why some of us feel so strongly against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Portman, and I reside at 7210 Polk Drive. We have lived in this subdivision for 19 years. We raised our children there. I still have children that goes to school, has to catch the school bus. With additional traffic, it's going to make it really difficult. You're talking about kids darting across the street, you're, they're dodging traffic. I really am opposed to this. We've seen the neighborhood grow, we know our neighbors, and additional, you know, with the traffic and with the, what they've said before about the railroad tracks and all that, we just don't see it that it's going to be vital for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? I want you to wait till the public hearing's over, Mr. Bratcher, and I'll give you an opportunity to come forward. Anybody else? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bratcher, you're the applicant, and you have the right to come up and speak.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and Planning Commission members and staff. I am Chris Bratcher, 522 Uptown Square, Murphysboro, Tennessee. I'm the owner of this property. I've owned this property for about 13 years, actually a little over that, and I've seen a couple of real estate booms and a couple of downturns and another boom. And I've been trying to sell this property for many years, and I can't get it sold, and I think it's because of the very reasons that these neighbors have come up here and spoke tonight. It's on Florence Road at a major intersection. It's busy, it's a lot of traffic there. It's at the closest lot to the intersection of that railroad. If someone, and I'm sure no one would want to see anybody's children raised on that residential lot where you have the crossing arms coming down right in your front yard. If you're standing on this lot, looking at Florence Road, straight in front of your lot is light industrial property. It's going to be developed as light industrial. If you look to the left, you've got a CSX railroad crossing, and you've got Commercial Highway and a car lot. If you look Catty Corner, you're looking at Florence Station and the canopy lights of a gas station. If you look to the right of this property, you've got Commercial Highway that's on the other corner of Alexandria Drive and Florence Road. And I suspect why this property never has been developed as residential property because it's not residential property. It's not conducive to single-family living. And if you look at the properties along their subdivision, along the southern border of their subdivision, everything, almost the majority of their subdivision is bordered by light industrial, the heavy industrial, which is the city's mulching facility, and the Commercial Highway, and then if you look down the other side, it's Commercial Highway on those solid railroad tracks all the way down to the most part of their subdivision. This is the only lot. This is the only lot, and it's actually the one that should be zoned commercial out of anything out there. It's the most liable commercial position on anything in this whole subdivision. It's on the corner lot, faces Florence Road, and it faces commercial on three sides. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the members of the Planning Commission have any questions for Mr. Bratcher? All right now, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, what's the issues of this commission?
I guess in the words of our friend and former member of this commission, Doug Young, this is not where I would build my dream home, and this is not a residential lot. There's no scenario that we can look at and say this was conducive to residential dwellings. There probably are several options of what could be developed on this lot. When we look at the lot, it's surrounded by Commercial Highway. It's on a heavily traveled Florence Road, although yesterday afternoon I was out there looking at this lot at 5:30 in the afternoon, and didn't have any trouble at all pulling out on Florence Road or crossing railroad tracks either one. But I understand that the railroad track has been there since before the Civil War, probably wouldn't have had a battle of Murphysboro if it hadn't been for that darn railroad track. But we, when we look at the property, you know, we've got to look at what its best use is, what... what its best use is, what, uh, um, what, what it should be zoned for, um, what the appropriate zoning would be. Um, I guess, I, I keep hearing Dollar General, I guess it could be a dentist office or other things with, uh, this type zoning. But, uh, no matter what it would be, uh, I would think that it's going to be something that would be of commercial in nature. And, um, it's, the two hundred vehicles a day, uh, is not going to be a significant impact on, uh, a road that's already that heavily traveled. But, um, you know, I, I, I guess if somebody's got a better idea of, of what the property should be used for, uh, other than what it, uh, is currently proposed, I, I, I always find it interesting that oftentimes people are opposed to things, but they very rarely offer a suggestion as to what it should be used as. And, um, I think that's one of the challenges that we face as a commission is to try and determine what the best use for the property is. And, uh, I think the zoning, uh, appears to be appropriate, uh, considering its location.
I, I would agree with Mr. Smuthman. I think as a practice, this commission has tried to look at what the best zoning buffer would be between residential and commercial. And as it's already been said, it's, it's commercial on three sides. And, and I feel like that this is something that we have, uh, approved in the past. I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning request.
Motion's made in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Uh, let me remind the public here that, uh, this is a recommendation that will go to the city council. The city council will have to approve this at their level and will hold another public hearing there. Okay? Move on to item J. Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding section two, interpretations and definitions. Section nine, standards for special permit uses. Section twenty-four, overlay district regulations. Article five, planned signage overlay district and chart one, uses permitted by the zoning district. City of Murfreesboro, planning and legal departments are the applicant, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'll be talking tonight about the first portion of this ordinance amendment that relates to vehicle sales. Uh, as you know, earlier this year, the city council placed a temporary halt on site plan approvals for vehicle sales lots. Uh, staff has been working to address the city council's concerns as well as the concerns that we hear from citizens on a pretty regular basis. Um, those primary issues, and if we can pull up video, it could be nice ambiance video for while I'm delivering this spiel.
Courtesy of Robert Lewis.
Courtesy of Robert Lewis.
Hopefully a, a brief video.
I'm going to talk right over the video.
Courtesy of me.
Is it you? Was it you?
Yes.
Okay. So, primary concerns, uh, that, that we want to address. First, the loading and unloading of trucks in the public right-of-way. Uh, this is a major safety concern. Uh, I think many of us have, I witnessed the loading and unloading of vehicles on the shoulders of Memorial Boulevard, Northwest Broad Street, John R. Rice Boulevard, just to name a few. This is a particularly egregious example of loading and unloading in the center turn lane on Murphy's, uh, excuse me, on Memorial Boulevard. Uh, I personally witnessed this at least two to three times a week, oftentimes during morning or afternoon rush hour when traffic is at its heaviest volume, um, along Memorial. Uh, this activity endangers drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians. The second concern is that some sites simply are not adequately sized to accommodate vehicle sales. I think this is why we see this kind of activity taking place in the public right-of-way. Uh, we also see properties becoming unsightly and difficult for customers, uh, to navigate, not even knowing where to enter or exit sometimes, uh, some of these vehicle sales lots. Um, when sites are not of adequate size to handle this use, onsite parking becomes disorganized. There's little distinction between the sales area and the customer parking area, and vehicle displays and maintenance areas creep closer and closer to neighboring properties and to the public right-of-way. Currently, the zoning ordinance allows vehicle sales by right in the CH, MU, LI, and HI districts. We propose taking the following steps to address the concerns that we've laid out here today. First, uh, we propose differentiating between different types of vehicle sales. Our primary concern is automobiles, not jet skis, water skis, snowmobiles, bicycles, unicycles, or anything of that sort. So we would propose splitting the use of vehicle sales into three distinct categories: automobiles, other than automobiles, and non-motorized vehicles. Secondly, we propose requiring special use permits for automobile sales lots in the CH and MU districts. Uh, because of the intensity of the use and the spatial demands of automobile sales lots, we think that adding an extra level of scrutiny, uh, is warranted. Uh, third, in all districts, we would suggest adding, uh, several specific standards for automobile sales lots, and these would include, uh, requiring all loading, unloading, and maneuvering to take place onsite in a specific area designated for such activity. Ensuring that an adequate amount of customer parking be available onsite. Requiring that all driveways and parking areas be paved and not with tar and chip. Requiring that salvage vehicles and automobile parts not be kept outdoors. Adding protections for residential areas that lie adjacent to automobile sales lots. And limiting the hours of operation and levels of outdoor noise. These standards would apply to all automobile sales lots regardless of the zoning district. Uh, for those lots that require, uh, special use permits, the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, along with staff, and ultimately the Planning Commission would be responsible for carrying out those standards. Uh, for lots not requiring special use permits, it would go through staff and/or the Planning Commission. Uh, we think that these measures would help advance, uh, use compatibility, aesthetics, and most importantly, safety on our city's most heavily traveled thoroughfares. Uh, the second part of this zoning amendment deals with planned signage overlay, and that is Mr. David Ives.
Thank you, Donald. Uh, good evening, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Uh, when the planned sign overlay district, uh, was established, established for only, uh, lots exceeding a certain size, and I believe the current size limit is twenty acres, uh, the basic previ- a basic provision was included that said you could not have a type of sign that's prohibited generally, uh, within the city by the sign ordinance. However, even at that time, when we set up that, uh, that provision, we created, we carved out, I think, about four exceptions, uh, and said that, uh, a sign could project from a building or over a building. Uh, it could be attached to trees or vegetation, or to utility poles. Uh, and it could be non-seasonal string lighting, even though the ordinance generally prohibited those, uh, ma- those, those types of signs. We've had a number of issues over the years when people have looked, uh, to do things in the sign, uh, in a planned sign overlay, uh, that many people, I think, staff felt would, would be appropriate and would be good for what was, what was being proposed. But we had to turn it down because of this provision that said that, that you couldn't utilize a sign that's generally prohibited in the sign ordinance. So we're proposing to eliminate that prohibition. We think there's a safety valve that, uh, will protect the public and the city. Uh, number one is that a planned sign overlay, uh, plan has to be approved first by the Planning Commission and then by city council. It is in fact, uh, an element of a zoning ordinance. And if it, if the PSO is in the gateway, uh, three area, which is, uh, the property that the city, uh, had owned, uh, it will have to go also through the design review committee. We feel that's a, a safety, a safety valve that will preclude, uh, something going through that, uh, is offensive to the public. And we think it'll give, uh, it'll enhance the ability to be creative and have novel and, uh, maybe some experimental signage. Uh, and again, this is limited to large developments. Uh, this won't be, um, on a normal commercial property. It'll only be, uh, have to be an area that's at least twenty, twenty acres. Questions be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. There's no comments. We're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I, um, first off, I'd just like to s- say to staff, I appreciate looking for ways of being flexible, uh, with respects to this change, especially on the, uh, sign piece. And I think very much so the safety issue with respects to the, uh, unloading of these vehicles is long overdue. So I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion's made in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item K of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding section nine, standards for special use permits. Section thirteen, planned development regulations. Section fourteen, districts established. Section fourteen A, amenity incentives for multifamily developments in the multiple, multiple family residential districts. Section nineteen, residential districts. Section twenty-four, overlay district regulations. Section twenty-five, temporary and accessory structures and uses. Section twenty-six, off-street parking, queuing, and loading. Section twenty-seven, landscaping and screening. Chart one, uses permitted by the zoning district. Chart two, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios. Chart four, required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use. Table one, adjacent and proposed zoning districts. And table two, buffer zone requirements. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Thank you for making me do that.
You had to do that twice. That's pretty good.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is a multi-part zoning ordinance amendment that we've crafted over a period of several months, um, largely in response to the moratorium that the city council placed on multifamily residential rezonings. That moratorium, uh, we have the second moratorium, and I believe it's set to expire here within the coming weeks. Uh, we have three goals in mind with, with, uh, this particular amendment. First, we want to use zoning to enhance quality of life for residents of multifamily developments and neighboring single-family, uh, neighborhoods. Second, uh, ensure that locations and densities of multifamily developments are compatible with their surroundings. And our third goal is to encourage compact single-family development where appropriate by providing additional zoning options. To achieve these goals, this amendment includes six components. We'll go through them quickly. Uh, first, increase, uh, the required landscape buffer between single-family detached and multifamily residential developments from twelve feet to fifteen feet. This would be consistent with the buffer that's required between single-family detached and commercial developments, uh, and would help promote privacy and compatibility, particularly where building heights and densities, uh, vary greatly. Uh, second, cap the number of dwelling units that can be allowed by right in the multifamily residential districts to one hundred. Anything over one hundred would require planned development. Uh, this would give the Planning Commission and the city council the ability to work with the developer to ensure proper location and compatibility. Uh, third, require that multifamily developments include an adequate amount of open space. With this amendment, uh, consistent with the upcoming design guidelines, we propose a twenty percent open space requirement and a five percent formal open space requirement. Fourth, eliminate the RM twenty-two zoning district. This district is not currently used except for a golf course. Uh, so we would, um, eliminate that district. Uh, anything that's at twenty-two units per acre, you'd probably want to see in a planned development anyway. Uh, number five, create a new RS six zoning district that would allow six thousand square foot lots. And for matters of, of safety, houses in the RS six zone would be required to have predominantly masonry exteriors. Uh, this zoning designation would be most appropriate in revitalizing areas, uh, but the Planning Commission and city council may consider it appropriate in other areas as well. Number six, finally, create a new RSA zoning district that would allow for a variety of housing types. Uh, this district would replace the RZ district and would consist of three specific development types. Type one would be consistent with the current RZ bulk and use standards and would allow the same uses as RZ. Uh, in fact, with this amendment, all existing RZ zoned properties would be redesignated as RSA type one. Type two would be suburban townhouses, uh, that may include front garages or parking lots and would be comparable to most of the townhouses that we see on a regular basis. Type three would be urban townhouses, which are currently a less common development type here in Murfreesboro. Uh, the brownstones at the Cove at Oakland's that we looked at earlier tonight would be a good example of something that would fit the type three criteria. Uh, these structures are built to the sidewalk and have on-street parking or rear parking only. They're also elevated above grade to distinguish between public and private space. We would expect to see that development type again in redeveloping or core type areas. I'll let it go with that. Conduct a public hearing and let us know if you have any questions. Thanks.
Any questions? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward.
John Floyd, sixteen-ten Georgetown Lane. On the, uh, R six zoning, uh, which is smaller lots, that's something, it's going to be a breath of fresh, fresh air for us, and I think it's a really good idea. I actually think that it should even be less than that, but for the time being, six thousand feet seems appropriate. We do have a lot of subdivisions where we're doing the PUDs that are, they're less than six thousand feet. And as you look at the growth, the growth in Nashville, you'll see these lots just get smaller and smaller and smaller. Uh, six thousand feet isn't really not that small a lot in today's market. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Anybody else?
Matt Taylor of SEC again. I just wanted to get back up here. Um, you know, we, uh, we like the direction of the RS six. We hope we're able to use it a lot to avoid as many planned developments in the future. I think staff's done a good job building in the, uh, quality of the building materials there and the open space requirements. Um, we would like you to look at the unit count on the multifamily a little harder, or at least some sort of grandfather clause for all the sites that have already been zoned. Uh, it's already been deemed appropriate for, um, that land use and for that unit count, um, honestly, based on the, based on the acreage size of the property previously zoned. So please take that into account. Everything else, I think we're, we like the direction it's headed.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anybody else? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. There's no questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission. We're ready for a motion.
Well, I don't mean to prolong this, but to Matt's question, are we grandfathering in, or are we retroing back in reference to this, what we're about to vote on?
I, can I quickly address Matt's, uh, question about the, the hundred unit cap? That, that is the city council, that, that is what the city council, um, supported, and so that is what we have carried out here. We originally had a higher number than that, um, but we have followed the, the advice of the city council.
I, I have not looked at the, the details on this, but I believe that at least that some of the existing zoning will be grandfathered. Uh, if there's an RM, uh, sixteen with, uh, entitlements, uh, there's, there's a good chance that some of that will be grandfathered. I will, uh, should try to, I will dig into that and have a better answer before, uh, this goes to council.
So, to answer Ken, Ken's question. So if we approve this, we won't be able to change the hundred count. Is that what you're saying? Unit count?
No, if, uh...
You can recommend something higher, uh, something higher.
Certainly, yeah. This, this is staff's, uh, I guess, draft of this, and certainly you, kind of, Planning Commission's free to recommend to council a higher or lower number, uh, or to take out the limitation completely. Uh, there had been some discussion that there, that a limitation would be appropriate, and this is the number that, I guess, staff is starting with.
Could you do it case by case study?
I'm sorry?
Could you do it based on case by case study on each?
That, I think, would cause some legality problems because there, essentially, there'd be, you, you would turn everything into a planned development, basically, that, that the, the numbers would be flexible depending on, on the project that came, they would, the numbers would vary based on the project that came in.
Now, Mr. Wade, when we initially, um, held a workshop with the city council on this, we actually did, did a study of, um, apartment complexes that had come in over the last cou- couple of years, and we arrived at the number two hundred and fifty initially because that seemed to be sort of an average number. Um, and the council, um, expressed that, that that number was too high and, and urged us to bring that down to this, um, lower threshold.
And I think, and, and let me respond to that. I think the reason the number wasn't one hundred was, I think, council felt it was a safety issue. But I think we need to understand, just because it, it's at a hundred...
But I think we need to understand, just because it's at a hundred, it's not a safety issue, because what you have on property then, you got a smaller apartment complex, but yet, you don't have full-time maintenance. You don't have full-time people that are working to prevent safety and other issues. If the larger properties are there, they got full-time people working twenty-four hours around the clock. So I think that's where I'm coming from. We have to be cognizant of, we're not, are we doing it for safety, or are we just doing it to keep a smaller unit?
The engineers I've talked to have preferred the higher number rather than the hundred. Mr. Taylor, what's your opinion?
I think what we have heard from your more sophisticated department developers and what we have seen of our nicer and more high-quality developments, multifamily, over the past several years, is you've got to push your number to a two-fifty or a three-hundred and above to be able to support the amenities and the on-site personnel to bring those items to market, essentially, in our marketplace. If you look at, like, Stone, I think it's Stone Bridge at Hillwood, that development is a very nice development. It's over three hundred units. I think if you look at thirty-three, forty-three, that's probably pushing three hundred. It's a very high-quality development. You know, you look at Everwood at the Avenue, that number's up three-fifty or so. That's a very nice quality development. What T D K is doing at the Avenue is about two hundred, but it's a different style. It's more of an urban, and those price points are going to be extremely high. So I think if you look at all of our newer, higher-quality, larger developments, that is, that's where we're getting the quality, is by allowing a higher number.
Thank you, Matt. I would support a motion going back to the council on recommending the two-fifty number to them again, if anybody wants to support that.
So, I almost, so argue with me about why we don't just delete number nine, where it says to add, "The number of dwelling units shall not exceed one hundred." Why do we want to pick a number? I mean, why do we want that? I know you, councilmen, that came for, there's a whole lot more behind it than that, but, I mean, we do. I think Mr. Taylor's points are very well-taken, that we have a lot of very nice developments that have come in recently that are much higher than even two-fifty. I can't, I mean, one hundred, where did that come from?
Tell them about section thirteen, number nine.
Yes, sir. I think one hundred is extremely low, and I think...
Mr. Smotherman, you're going to see this again. What's your feeling, sir?
We like a number.
Yeah, I was in that meeting. I was there. I don't miss any meetings. I was here at noon today. The reason for the one hundred, I think, was, and it is an ambiguous number. I mean, it comes pulled out of the air and said, "Okay, let's look at this and see how it sounds." The intent was on larger developments that, because of the impact that they might have on an area or a community, that we would like to see more planned development coming from, with our overview more so than just a neighborhood developing, basically fitting the criteria of the zoning. And so, that's kind of where the number came from. I don't know that the council would be opposed to raising that number. You know, Kurtz probably got his much input. He was at the meeting as well. And, I think you were. But the, I think, the common comment we hear from development is, you know, "We don't want to go through the expense of the planned development, and we don't want to go through the..." But when you're talking about developing over a hundred apartments, then you're probably, or townhouses, or whatever it is that you're developing on this property, if you're going over a hundred, the price is so significant that the cost of the planned development is almost insignificant. I mean, it's a big number, but when you look at the overall expense of a thirteen to thirty million dollar project or something like that, I forgot what the breakpoint was, that we said it was costing per unit to develop right now. But, you know, I think that the council was sitting there discussing it, and if we were going to err, we wanted to err on the low side and not the high side. And I think that's where the one hundred came from. I don't think it's anything that anybody had chiseled in stone and said, "This can't be changed," so.
Mr. Taylor, do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, listening to Mr. Smotherman talk, and I think you're right. I don't really think it's the cost of the put. It's, even on future developments, if hundreds is the number, that's fine. I'm really targeted more toward the properties that have already went through the zoning process, some of those very laboriously, to get that zoning entitlement previously, worked very hard and diligently with the neighbors. You know, the Haynes property on Memorial Boulevard is one that specifically comes to mind right off the bat. Even the Myrtle Bell Farm, a lot of that is already zoned appropriately out there for RM sixteen. And those entitlements would essentially be stripped by this action.
And I think that, I agree with you, that there should probably be a grandfather process that would accept what has already been approved. It's like you say, I mean, the negotiation has already been...
For a period of time, not twenty years from now. Can't come back.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that, too. I mean, a grandfather period that would say five years, or, you know, eight years, again, an ambiguous number. But it, the...
And that's all I ask. I think, beyond that, the cost of the pattern book is negligible.
If you develop in the next five years, you'll be grandfathered. If you don't develop it in the next five years, then...
Mr. Smotherman, I do, I believe that if there are grandfather rights, and I think there will be, that's controlled by state law.
A long time.
Let me add one thing. Just in retrospect, the council before, in the years before the Great Recession, those of us that were on the planning commission then, was wanting just about everything coming through the planning commission to go before the council with a planned development type tag addressed, attached to that. And we complied, and the development community responded accordingly. But what that resulted in was a large number of developments that had to come back before this commission, when the recession hit, and those planned developments just didn't come about, for whatever reasons. So I would caution the council about straying backing and getting back into that, where everything they want to see is planned development again.
The pendulum swings. It's back and forth.
It has a good place in the zoning ordinance, and it's really good on certain protections or certain circumstances. But then again, you can go overboard with it. Mr. Wade, do you have a motion, sir?
Of course. I make a motion that we take it back to two-fifty or we take the one hundred off and let council have further discussion on that.
Which one do you want to?
On the one, where we have the one hundred, which one do I want? Two-fifty?
Or, in your mind.
You put an or, so...
Okay, two-fifty.
You want to change the one hundred to two-fifty?
Yes.
So you want to change the number on item, section thirteen, number nine D, from one hundred to two-fifty?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Now, there are two places in this ordinance, I believe, where it's one hundred.
And wherever else is...
Wherever, okay. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Any limitation of one hundred would be changed to two hundred. I'm sorry, to two-fifty. One hundred to two-fifty.
And additionally, with the other apartments will be grandfathered in.
And I'm going to agree, and I'm going to vote for your motion, but I do want you to know that two-fifty is just as ambiguous a number as one hundred.
I agree. I agree.
Well, except that they, didn't you come back about two-fifty?
But, I mean, you know, he said that, talked about developments that were three hundred. And so, again, you would prevent those, so, I mean, it might reduce the number. I don't know.
The council, in their esteemed wisdom, can change it to whatever you'd like.
I'm sure they will.
They?
They? They. I'm just one of seven, six right now.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thankfully, all opposed, none and no abstentions. How about a final public hearing tonight pertaining to our sign folks that are here, the codespeople? Item aye.
Chairman, I will be happy to be the caboose tonight. So, if we may, we have an amendment. We have a proposed amendment to the sign ordinance, and there's two parts to this.
May I read it into the record first?
I'm sorry.
May I read it into the record?
You may.
Thank you. Proposed amendments to the sign ordinance regarding the city property and athletic field, City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is applicant, Ms. Drives.
Thank you, sir. Two parts to this amendment. The first part is that I thought we already had a full separability clause in the ordinance, which would say that if any part of the ordinance is declared invalid, the rest of the ordinance stays. Currently, that's only in one section of the ordinance, and so we feel it should apply to the ordinance itself, and so we're proposing to add that separability clause. Second is, we have a section of the signed ordinance that exempts certain things from control of the signed ordinance, such as public art, things of that nature. We're proposing to add three items to that. In general, local governments have the ability to have themselves not be subject to all of their own ordinances. In Murfreesboro, generally, we have complied with the zoning and the signed ordinance, but not a hundred percent of the time. There are a couple of exceptions that we want to put in here to make it clear that the city can do some things outside the signed ordinance. So what we want to exempt from the control of the signed ordinance are graphics and other materials placed on city-owned buildings, city-owned structures, or on city property, and other objects placed on city property. A building, a permit, an electrical permit, of course, would be required. We also want to exempt scoreboards and related components at athletic fields if their primary orientation is toward the field of play.
Is that on city-owned property only, or county?
The scoreboards would be on any athletic field.
Okay, and...
The first one would be on city-owned property and city-owned buildings.
Okay, but for the signage on fences, is that city-owned or county-owned?
It would be any athletic field.
Any athletic, okay, thank you.
A city school, a county school, a private school. I'm not aware of anything other than that. An athletic field at a park would be covered by that.
I think his question was, you're responding to scoreboards. He was asking a question about signs on fences, I think, at the ballfields. Was that correct?
Yes, sir.
This only includes the scoreboards. We're not exempting, at this point, the signs on the fences. I think our practice has been to treat those as temporary signs, and we have not sought to enforce removal of a sign that's oriented outside the field of play on a school athletic facility. And the final thing is to cover parks, also cover parks that informational, directional, and other such signs in the city parks. Again, if they're primarily oriented toward the internal operations of the park, would not be covered by the sign ordinance, excluded from the sign ordinance.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing there's nobody left, nobody's coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion?
This doesn't govern MTSU's scoreboards or anything, because it's on state property, right?
We have no authority.
Yes, that's correct.
We have no authority on that.
We have no...
I mean, they've got lighted signs and stuff that are operating on Greenland Drive that would be legal.
One on Greenland, the one on Middle Tennessee, of course, that's going to get removed, and I'm sure it'll be replaced, but...
I would imagine. And it will have no effect on, say, Oakland High School or any of those stadiums that have football fields that they can put banners and stuff on that are probably visible from the street. Is that correct, because they're on county property?
It would not change that at all.
What about the signs that are attached to the scoreboards, but they're not facing the field?
If they're not visible from public right-of-way, we wouldn't regulate them.
Right. There's some part of that that's not visible from the public right-of-way.
County? There's a sign on the back of the Oakland High School football scoreboard that faces the street.
Currently, it would be considered a temporary sign. We don't regulate any temporary signs on county properties, even like in for, like, elections or anything like that. We don't govern anything within the property of the county.
So who exactly is this going to affect?
I'm sorry?
Who is this going to affect? I mean, if it's not the county schools and it's not MTSU, who are we?
It can impact city schools, several city parks, and there's some private schools that may be impacted.
So maybe some impact on sports com or something like that.
Right.
Currently, our sign ordinance does not allow electronic message center signs. A lot of the scoreboards that are being used at park facilities and for football fields, baseball fields, have the ability to scroll messages. This would not, or this would omit regulation of scoreboard-type uses for sporting events in our parks and what have you.
Right.
So it, currently today, if they put up a scoreboard that's electronic, it would not be in compliance with our sign ordinance. This would allow that to take place. And their primary use is for the field. It's not to broadcast messages to the general public or public right-of-way. It's actually for use primarily for that sporting event. This would actually make that legal.
Any other comments? Now, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That concludes the public hearing and portion of our agenda tonight. I think we have one item under old business from Mr. Blomley pertaining to the planning commission calendar.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Lamb, and I'm going to pass this out. We have a recommendation for an amendment to the approved 2017 planning commission calendar. It's not with regards to any specific meeting dates, it's with regards to an upcoming submittal date. Currently, on the approved 2017 calendar, the submittal date for the June planning commission cycle, which is when we get all the plans in, whether that's Platts, site plans, rezonings, annexations, it's Ms. Jacob's favorite day of the month. It's a lot to do, and we're very thankful for her and our other administrative staff, because it's a very, very busy day.
Good save, Matthew.
Thank you. At any rate, we have our submittal date for June on June the first. But due to some previously unforeseen staffing issues during June, we need some additional time during that month to review the plans and handle the workload that we anticipate. And so it is our recommendation, as you can see on the calendar, to move that submittal date back a week to May the twenty-fifth. It will not affect the June meeting schedule, just the submittal deadline for June. And so we would ask for a motion and a vote to approve the revised calendar with May twenty-fifth being the submittal deadline for the month of June.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Don't we have any argument about it? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Blomley?
No, sir.
Mr. Anthony?
No, thank you.
Mr. Whitaker?
Absolutely not.
I'm not going to ask Ms. Drives. Go for the business. We stand adjourned.